I would like to welcome everyone watching on ITV and via livestream and call the March 14, 2023 regular meeting to order with all board members present. The Army JRTC color guard from Hoover High School will now present the colors. Please stand for the presentation of the colors.
Forward, march. March time, march. Blue yard, go. Center, make. Charity, color. Freeze, neck, color.
Trustee Nepomocino, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Charity, color. Right, make. Forward, march.
I would like to make a motion, or I would like a motion to adopt today's agenda. Do we have a motion? Motion by trustee Hazen, do we have a second? Second by Dr. Whitehurst Payne. Okay, we're going to start with voting. Trustee Nepomocino first, please.
Aye.
And trustee Quatoriano.
Aye.
And all others. Okay, motion pass. Passes unanimously. Okay, minus one.
Okay, today's, today's meeting of the Board of Education is a business meeting that is conducted in public and board members will not engage in a dialogue with members of the audience. Board bylaw 1025 sets the time limit for public comment on agenda items at 10 minutes per side, pro and con, or 20 minutes total. Speakers will be able to provide testimony at the beginning of the appropriate agenda item or at the end of the meeting for non-agenda public comment. The list of speakers is attached to Agenda Item B2. Please listen for your name to be called. Speakers are listed and called in the order received. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. Speakers participating via Zoom will be asked to unmute when their name is called. If you are unable to unmute yourself, we will call the next speaker. Zoom does not allow staff to access your personal device to unmute a speaker. Please follow along with the agenda so you know when your item is coming up for discussion. If you would like to sign up for in-person public comment, computers are available in the lobby outside of the auditorium.
Thank you. And now I'd like to ask the students from Balboa Elementary to come to the podium to introduce tonight's student presentation.
Hello, everyone. My name is Emma Abelson and these are my classmates. Noah Benson, Christina Altonor, and Ponse De Witzin. We are second graders in Miss Avery and Senora Garrett's class at Balboa Dual Language Elementary School. Since Balboa is a dual-language school, we learn English and Spanish every day. That said something really special about most of us is that we don't just speak two languages. We speak another language at home, with our families. We are trilingual. For today's presentation, we came together with our teachers to write a poem that speaks to how special it is to speak multiple languages and how much we love this part of our identities. We hope you enjoy our poem. It's called "Many Languages, One Mean."
I am Noah. I call Si Noah.
I'm Christina. I'm Christina.
Yo soy Ponse. My family, teachers, and friends call me Ponse. But some people at the one year senior or the daughter's office call me Ponz.
I am Emma. My family calls me a two-sho.
I am seven years old.
I'm a good seven.
Tengo siete años.
I'm three seven.
I am from San Diego. My family's from the Philippines.
My sister, I, too, I'm Haiti.
Nací en San Diego. Mi familia es de México.
I am from Iraq. My family came to the United States before I was born for a better life.
We are second graders at Balboa!
En la escuela aprendemos, hablamos, escribimos, leemos, jugamos, soñamos en español e inglés.
At Balboa, we learn, speak, write, read, play, and dream in Spanish and English.
My teachers teach me to be proud of who I am.
My teachers teach me to put my heart into everything I do.
My teachers teach me to never give up.
My, my teacher tells me how to read. During recess, we want to play basketball.
En la hora de recreo, me gusta jugar fútbol.
During recess, I like to play free stacks.
I'm a heavy abtether ball.
Math is my favorite subject because you get to learn numbers and operations.
I love reading nonfiction books about animals and their habitats because animals are so cute.
La materia que más me apasiona es la ciencia porque me encanta experimentar y aprender más o menos que me rodea.
My favorite subject is math.
We have many words for the place we go to learn.
Madrosa.
La escuela.
La con.
School.
Pa aralan.
Balboa!
That's because at home I hear the sounds of Arabic.
The Galo in English.
Haitian carol.
Escucho la lengua de mi familia, de mi cultura, de mis raíces. I sing the lyrics of the crunch and monster in the car with my little brother. I get home to the smell of it, to, to the smell of fidel on the stove. Being Mexican-American means feeling proud of who I am and my family.
Big Haitian means the smell of banana, pizza, and chicken. It means remembering my family come back in Haiti, missing my real mom, missing my bro's mom.
Being Filipino means in the car singing, "I got a mission." "Pumutas atop, buhar mahira, gaming masarap."
Being Filipino means the smell of gare gare, sinang, and the taste of adobo. It means remembering my loved ones who have passed away. When my family celebrates Arao, Nong, Maga Patay, it means the pride of knowing I am, I am different, I am special.
Being from Iraq means listening to Arabic songs in the car, singing Il Ghazal Raye as loud as I can. Il Ghazal Raye, Manas Il Halwaze. It means the smell of Timon Ahmad. It means the tradition of playing bats every weekend. I am proud of the evenings and weekends I spend learning Arabic's beautiful script with my homie and auntie.
So I'm gonna go and say un grand futbolista.
I dream of being a veterinarian.
I'm dreaming of being a queen.
Sueño, sueño con ser un científico que estudia y mejora nuestro mundo.
Estoy orgullosa de mi familia.
I am proud of myself and my languages.
I am char, I am proud I am trilingual.
I am proud.
Y ping nag mama la kiko.
I'm a fakura.
Estoy orgulloso.
We are proud to be Balboa students!
Because Balboa is a place that teaches us to be proud of who we are.
Thank you so much for sharing that. That was fantastic. How much did you guys have to practice that?
Every day.
Every day.
For...
Two weeks?
Yeah, two weeks.
I could tell.
For 30 hours after.
I could tell. I could tell you worked hard on that. It really, yeah, it really paid off. And I love your poster over here, too. The little visuals.
I'm sorry.
It's beautiful.
Oh, did she ask? What did you say? I'm sorry?
Oh, sorry. I was just saying we like the poster over here, too. It was beautiful.
What did you guys do when the poster, you made your... Their flags from their countries.
That's fantastic. Thank you very much. Any of the board members?
Can I just say?
A lot of support from family, their families, because I will keep them.
We've never been more proud to have students come before us. You're incredible. And I know Dr. Bagula is beaming with pride here as well. Just, just amazing. You show us what school is all about and what is possible for our young people. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Thank you again. Thank you. That was a wonderful way to start off our meeting. Great spot. Okay, we're moving on to item D1. And General Counsel Green, I don't believe there were any reportable actions.
There was actually one. The board voted 5-0 to not reelect a single employee.
All right, thank you. Superintendent Jackson, are there any administrative assignments to report out?
Thank you. President Baso, there are none this evening.
Okay. At this time, I'd like our ASB president, Abigail Ramos, from Morris High School to introduce herself and tell us about her school and what all the fantastic programs and events that are taking place at Morris High School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Abigail Ramos and I am the ASB president and a senior at Morris High School. At Morris, our primary focus is increasing the engagement of students, school efficiency, and most importantly, ensuring students feel they have a safe learning environment. As increasing student engagement and school positivity is our main goal of ours, holding spirit weeks once every month along with pep rallies has been the most effective and efficient way for students to feel more included. With pep rallies, ASB hosts games for students to participate in and are able to include teams and clubs around the school to, for them to perform or to fundraise and take the opportunity to branch out to other students. By enforcing club-to-student interaction, it mimics networking and business situations that prepare students for future occurrences. Additionally, in our spirit weeks, we have recently enforced dedicating one day to any awareness going on during the month, to not only provide our support but also to spread consciousness. As of this month, in support of Women's History Month, our ASB has decided to take a day out of our school spirit week to wear purple as a way of memorizing all the women that have made a difference in our world and as well as their accomplishments. Speaking along the lines of school positivity, recently we have also held what is called the Special Olympics. Here, we have dedicated most of our school day for students with special needs to play basketball with other Morris students to promote the inclusion of all students. In favor of this, our ASB utilizes the power of our social media platforms, specifically Instagram, to publicize the words of encouragement and affirmation as an alternative in being an open hand to students. Academically, if any of our students seem to be struggling with their academics, our school library is open before school and after school every day for students to receive tutoring services and resources from our teachers and also our counselors, who are constantly posting scholarship opportunities and more in our school-wide, global classroom streams that connect to all Morris students where they are able to access outside resources. Ultimately, ultimately, in the long run, our motive at Morris High School is the concern of our students and what they need. As an ASB president and also as a student, I can say Morris is a place not only for learning but safety. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Where are you going to school?
I plan on going to UCSD. I'm really hoping for that school and majoring in biochemistry.
Congratulations.
As of right now, I actually got into three CSUs, so I'm planning to branch out to more.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's exciting. All right, I think we are up to Superintendent Jackson's information report.
Thank you, President Baso, and it's good to see you. Welcome back. And I know, you know, I just want to say this. I've shared it with individuals, but collectively, just want to share with folks listening to our board that I want to just say that I'm, I'm really thinking about you and others who are going through some very challenging times right now. And I think it is our collective responsibility to really push out love and care and compassion and understanding. And that's how I want to start my report. That's who I am. And there's a lot of people that just need a little extra love right now. And I want to say I appreciate you and I appreciate you, Cody, and Enrique, and so many others who are going through some challenges, myself included. And one of the things that I appreciate about Unified is that we come together and we support one another. And so thank you to the board, to the staff, to the community, to our students, to our educators, to our staff members who are at a school site or central office staff who continue to show up. And that's why we believe and will continue to believe in our restorative practices. Because, you know, a lot of questions around what we believe and, and how we're implementing, and we know we're not perfect. We know we're not perfect. We know we're not going to be perfect until each and every child is supported in the way that they need to be supported. But we will continue to believe in equity as, as a means to making sure that each and every child is seen without debt. And it doesn't matter how much we do. If it's not enough, we will continue to do more. Because that's what we are about. We are about loving our children and caring about our children and seeing them and hearing them the way that they need to be seen and the way they need to be heard. That does not mean that there are not consequences for our actions. And restorative justice practices does not eliminate that. But that is not our go-to. That is not the way we are going to love and care for our young people. And so my, my report is more of a reminder of who we are and how we be and why we exist. And we have collectively stood about the things that are right for our students and our staff and our families. And when our second graders stand up and say they are proud, we should be proud because they are the models of what we are about. And we also need to hear the parents and the students who are crying out for help for us, to stand in the gap for them. And if it sounds like I'm preaching, so be it. But I'm, I'm going to be the voice for what we are going to be about as the superintendent of San Diego Unified School District. And when we get questioned, we are going to answer those questions. And when we're not doing well enough, we're going to admit that we're not doing well enough. And that's okay because that's going to propel us forward. So that's what I'm proud of, and that's why I'm here and I will continue to be here with the rest of the staff and this Board of Education because that's what our community needs as a city. They need us to lead. So we will continue to review our policy, our plans. We'll continue to look at the data and we'll continue to get better. So I want to start there. The, the next piece is we know that we are doing a tremendous amount and we have to look at ourselves and ask ourselves, what do the data say and where are we putting the resources? That being said, we also need to expect from our partners and our politicians in DC and at the state. And so last week, I had the opportunity to join the county superintendent, the superintendent of Poway, the superintendent at Bonzel, so we can do some of our federal advocacy. And, and one of our key partners is Congresswoman Jacobs, who is helping support us get full funding for an impact aid to support our children who are in the homes of our military. Because the military is committed to maintaining our environment, our safety, and we, we should invest in our children who are from military families. And so I want to thank Congresswoman Jacobs and also had the opportunity to meet with our former superintendent and current Deputy Secretary Cindy Martin, who is also a proponent of making sure that we get fully funded impact aid and Title I dollars. And so I want to thank her as well. I want to acknowledge the communications. I know Maureen is sitting here and there are so many others who have received the Excellence in Communication Awards this past week from the California School Public Relations Association. Congratulations. And, and I imagine Maureen is sitting there saying, "Thank you." However, we have to get better and so I appreciate that as well. We will get better and we will support our schools in messaging the great things that are happening like at Balboa so that we can increase our enrollment because we know that this is the finest place for our educators to teach and our staff to work in and our parents to send their children and our, our children to attend. I'm not going to speak on the honor band. I'm hoping you will. Okay, great. So I will pass those comments to you, sir. That is it, President Baso, for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. And I think we'll go to our student board members and let's start with trustee Quatoriano.
Thank you. These last few weeks for me have been incredibly hectic with honor band rehearsals as Dr. Jackson alluded to. I had the privilege and honor of being part of our honor ensemble. I played a baritone saxophone. We had our concert yesterday, but the last few weeks have been filled with six-hour-long rehearsals.
Sunday.
And Friday.
Sunday.
And, oh, yeah, the concert, right. We've had many, many long rehearsals. Many of the staff were there. I want to again thank our VAPA department and Russ for putting this all together. It was truly life-changing. And that's just been my last few weeks. Thank you.
Trustee Nepomocino.
Sorry.
I got you. I got you.
Yeah, we're good, we're good.
First of all, I want to congratulate my fellow trustee Quatoriano for honor band. I know you're balancing so much and excelling in all of it. So really, thank you so much. It's an honor to serve as a student board member with you. Bringing me to my first point, which is the fact that applications for student board member candidacy open up this week, which will be discussed later in today's meeting, with a student board member election video. And secondly, last week, I had the really great opportunity to watch the student advisory board meeting. And something that really stood out to me is that menstrual products were continuously being restocked in multiple schools, including Kearney High School. So hearing that information was really great and the positive impact menstrual products and its accessibility has on students. Thank you.
Trustee Dr. Whitehurst Payne.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Superintendent, for acknowledging that the needs among folks on this dais. And we just ask the larger community to keep us in your thoughts and prayers as we go forward. I just want to say that, I think Melissa put some pictures up. I'm not sure if she did or not, but at any rate, we did a lot of things. And I want to say that that band, the honors band this time, I think that was the best I've ever seen. I've been going for seven, eight years and to see the entire, the conductor did everything without music. I mean, he just knew it and was conducting without music. And so you guys did an outstanding job. The choir I had spoken about earlier, but I have, the orchestra was good, too. But I offered a, a challenge to folks and that is, what can I say? Yeah, we're going to have a day or a week of music.
She said she challenged folk, but it was really the superintendent. As, as a director of that.
Yes, but I think one of the things that you all don't realize is that just as he said, he put a lot of time in it and the students put a lot of time in rehearsing. And I, I think they need to be recognized by a larger group than just the parents. So we'd like to open it up so the whole city can come. And maybe we can have a day of just one instrument after the other, mid-level elementary, right through the day. And folks can come and go and sit all day if you want to or do whatever. But I think it would be an opportunity for us to showcase the wonderful things that are happening in the, in the VAPA program. They go to football games or basketball games and all the others. But just for us to do music one day, I think would be a great idea. So I tossed that out to them. The pictures, yes, we went by Freeze, Crawford, and hopefully trustee Barero will talk about what that was about. The basketball team, I think it was, gathered around me. They thought Barack Obama, the former president, was there and they wanted that picture to go to him. So they all agreed to stand behind an old lady and take a picture. But that was fun and I'll let you talk about that a little bit more, Richard. And basically, that's a picture of the choir, the honors choir, that was shown there and that was, we had over 800 folks in the audience. We are challenging because we had folks standing in the aisle. Not a fire marshal around, right? But we had, it was so crowded until we recognized we need a larger venue and that's why we can have it all together. I think I covered everything on that list, even though there were some other things we did. Crawford Freeze visited there, the Balboa, oh, Classics for Kids. Cody and I went to see that. And as I walked in the lobby, all the elementary students were there. Oh, my God, I've never seen the way the students acted then. They were all clapping and I don't think they were supposed to, but they were all engaged and clapping. So they said the students were really engaged this time. So that was a wonderful opportunity. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Whitehurst Payne. And then we have trustee Barero.
Yeah, Dr. Whitehurst Payne talked about a really special couple of days last week at Hoover and Crawford High Schools. So Dr. Solomon Bililing, who's an internationally renowned physicist and teaches at North Carolina A&amp;T University, which is an historically black university. He came a few months ago to partner with the Ocean Discovery Institute in City Heights as a scientist in residence. And he gave a presentation to the community, but it was so powerful that we wanted to bring him back. And so with Ocean Discovery Institute, we were able to bring him here for a couple of days to speak to both our science classes and science teachers. An incredible life story. So the work that he does as a physicist is, he uses lasers to examine air quality in cities in Africa. And he talked about the fact that over the next century, 13 of the largest 20 cities in the world will be in Africa. And he's looking at the, you know, the issues of, of air quality there. He also, as a young person, having just graduated from university, spent five years in prison as a political prisoner and was subjected to torture and subjected to severe struggle. But one of the things that he and, you know, some, some of his fellow prisoners decided to do is they started a school at the prison and educated other prisoners first and then actually began educating the guards. And he talked about the transformation that happened in that environment as a result of education. So. So career educator, incredibly powerful and impactful scientist, and somebody who's devoted his life to making the world a better place. And so having a chance for some of our science students to hear from his example, and our science teachers as well, was really an honor. Yeah.
Fantastic. Thank you. Let's start, go down to trustee Dr. Pedersen.
Thank you, Dr. Whitehurst Payne, trustee Whitehurst Payne, for showing the slides. My only, I'm not a good slide person, so my only hope is to be, have a cameo appearance in your slide, so. Thank you for sharing that. I, that, let me just say that both the orchestra and the honors concert were, it's really stunning. And in particular, I'll have to reiterate Sharon's remark, the trustee Whitehurst Payne's remarks, that the honors band was like, if somebody had told me it was a civic band, like our civic standing, I would have believed them for sure. I was actually, I think she can testify, I was actually tearing up about it. It was, I was, some of those were so moving, it was really incredible. And I also want to recognize John Paul Balnot over at, I think he's a director at Mission Bay, and he's actually taking the students to, is it Yokohama, or he's, they have a, they have a jazz band, preservation band. So I want to, it's one of the, it's in, I think, your docket, but, but he's doing incredible work there and has for a number of years. So I want to recognize him. I think he got Director of the Year, was that what he got? Yeah, just want to recognize him. You know, one of the things that folks don't see when we're up on the dais is many of us spend tens of hours every week on site visits and at various events. And anybody who's a thinking person and feeling person spends a lot of time, as you're going to bed at night, just going through all the feelings and thoughts and ideas, because you really are, when you're in the classroom and you're talking to principals and you're out in the community, you're seeing this sort of cauldron in which we, as a society, are making human beings, or turning young adults, children, young adults into, into members of our society. And one of the things that occurs to me, several of the trustees have alluded to, I think three of us up here have been in and out of the hospital over the last two days with loved ones. And I think one of the things that really comes home, whether we're in closed session or we're out in a school site, our teachers, our students, our teachers, our families, our administrators, our neighbors, people are hurting right now. You know, I think we've come out of the pandemic, so there's a sense of kind of like relief, but I think people are still struggling socio-emotionally and economically. And I think part of our story is, or part of our work is to do everything we can within the constraints of the classroom. But honestly, I think a big part of what we need to do as a district is fight for our students and staff in the community, because it's not, we are doing everything we can to address the challenges our students and faculty are facing, but this society is failing them. And so I think you're going to see, you're certainly going to see me, I presume you're going to see other members of this board at other jurisdictions, at city councils, in Sacramento, in DC, fighting for, to address the socioeconomic context, which is really a decisive factor in the, both the wellbeing, socio-emotional wellbeing, and the academic achievement of our students. It's like, it's such a big part of the story of what's happening in these students' lives. And I think I'm very motivated to fight for our students beyond just the constraints of the classroom. It's time for us to really go to battle more large, at a larger scale for our students, so.
Thank you, Dr. Pedersen. Vice President Hazen.
Thank you. And I'm glad to come after the superintendent and trustee Pedersen. I think, I was going to share a whole slide deck about toxic stress. I am going to come back to you all with it. But suffice it to say, everybody is going through challenging times, and some of our students are experiencing an onslaught of toxic stress on a daily basis. And I'm so glad Superintendent Jackson lifted up the way safe, stable, nurturing, restorative schools can buffer against all of that hardship. And we know, as you described, there are places where we have to do it better, but we know, despite all of the tough things that are happening, we know we have students experiencing homelessness, we know we have students that are in and out of foster care, we know we have students who are experiencing violence, but the safety, stability, caring, trusting, loving environment we can create at our schools can be that one thing that makes a difference. And you don't have to take my word for it, the CDC says the same. Within that context, I, I think I've got a minute left, don't want to go over, visited Normal Heights Elementary, a couple times actually, in the last few weeks, and saw there an environment with outcome-oriented, really student-centered leadership and instruction, consistent use of mindful practices. I was there for Wellness Wednesday, and students were breathing deeply, having the opportunity to center themselves. For context, at the school, 85% of students are socio-economically disadvantaged, 27% are emergent bilingual students. And in this warm, loving, supported, supporting environment, the school saw a 21% decrease in chronic absenteeism from fall to winter, 6% growth from fall to winter on their fast reading assessment, and also growth in math as well. And so we know that when we're talking about restorative practices, when we're talking about these wonderful supportive environments, it translates into student success in every way. So just want to remind all of us that all of these things go hand in hand and are mutually reinforcing.
Thank you, Vice President Hazen. So I will end with saying that, yes, the last two weeks have been quite a challenge for me. We found out exactly two weeks ago, my husband and I are fairly, pretty transparent people, that he had to go in for an MRI. He was diagnosed with a brain tumor. It's cancerous. And Dr. Jackson showed up at the ER, Dr. Whitehurst Payne sat in the hospital with me. So I really appreciate all the love and support from everyone. But I didn't want to just end with that. I also want to share that my husband, he's a sports medicine and family medicine physician at UCSD, and just between the district and the UCSD staff, I mean, it's just the outpouring of support, love and support has just been overwhelming, so thank you to everyone. My husband also does a lot of volunteer work. He started at Miramesa with, he's a huge football person, so out of his own, you know, just interest, he started just being the doctor, just volunteering, showing up at all the games. He eventually started with Scott Juisty, who's in charge of the sports programs for the district concussion protocol for the entire district. So he was responsible for helping to get that program started. This was several years ago, when that was become, starting to become, you know, more, more of a concern. Also, very, he was critical in helping to now have an athletic trainer at every school, because we didn't have that at every school. So I did want to share that not only has he is a physician, but he also has done a lot of volunteer work, including at our district. And so I wanted to give that tribute to him at this meeting this evening. And just a little funny story, when he was going in for one of the tests before his surgery, the doctor had a Georgia Bulldogs, like a surgery hat, and he was like, "Oh, one of our students from Lincoln High School, his football is coming to you, and he's fantastic." So he brags about our, you know, particularly our athletes, and is very invested. So thank you again to everyone, and that's my report for this evening. All right.
I have one more thing.
Oh, yes, sorry, we have one more.
I forgot, and, and, and thank you, and thank Dave. As we, as we transition and we hold that, I do want to invite everyone watching here, everyone here, extend the invitation across the city, that we have an art exhibit that is happening tomorrow from 4:30 to 6:30. I know this is not going to make sense, but I'll tell you anyways, and when you get here, you can ask. Wing A and Wing B, second floor, 4:30 to 6:30, we have phenomenal pieces of art on the walls, on exhibit, from our students, UTK to 12. Incredible, incredible pieces. They are not for sale, I don't believe. So don't take them off the wall, but, but maybe we'll work it out with the VAPA department. I don't know that we'll collect the money, but the students can use the money. It's their, it's their art. So 4:30 to 6:30 tomorrow, Wing A and B, second floor.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. I got to go last year for the first time to that, and it was just phenomenal. I mean, the artwork is incredible. So yeah, if you get a chance to see that, I definitely recommend it. Okay, now we are on to item E1. We will now hear about the update on LCAP Goals 2 and 3 on track to graduation. Superintendent Jackson and staff, please present the item.
Thank you, President Bosso. Yes, this evening, I am going to invite senior directors, Dr. Jen Roberson and Roman Del Rosario. Dr. Roman Del Rosario, come up and join me as they provide an update on the goals and metrics outlined in LCAP Goal 2 and 3 as it pertains to high school graduation. They're also going to share a bit about the newly designed office of graduation and how they are working to support both the middle schools and high schools. And we believe this design is going to yield better outcomes in the future as it relates to these data. So as you see these data, we can look forward to the future as well. And so welcome this evening, Dr. Roberson and Dr. Del Rosario. I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening.
You might want to hit that.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Good evening, President Bosso, Vice President Hazen, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Jackson. This evening, alongside my colleague, Dr. Roman Del Rosario, will be providing an update on LCAP Goal 2 and 3 with an intentional focus, as Dr. Jackson mentioned, on the design for the office of graduation, as well as how we as a team work to support our middle and high schools in a different manner. So as a district team, it's really important to note that we work closely with our high school administrators and counselors to move the dial on the metrics shown here by monitoring student progress and being responsive to student needs. While the goals and metrics shown here represent the work and outcomes of high school, high schools across our district, we recognize the importance of middle school years and the need for 6 through 12 alignment. So as we progress throughout the year in our journey with the development of the office of graduation, you'll see the metrics apply and extend to the mid-level, and that's forthcoming. But I'd really like to draw your attention to the bolded words on the left side of the slide. They are meaningful, readiness, accelerate, enhance, reignite. These five words are important to lift because they truly represent our work as a team. Throughout this presentation, we will share how we are intentionally designing and supporting our students differently to achieve much more than the metrics shown on this slide. This slide indicates how we, as a district, intend to reimagine our ways of being, learning, and doing. While this presentation illuminates the data, satellite data such as graduation rates, it's really important to note that we intend to humanize our data from the student level up, using street data, such as our student empathy interviews that we've conducted with our students, staff, administrators, and eventually our educational partners. And as you may recall, at our February 28th board meeting, Superintendent Jackson shared the construct of the office of graduation, and that it was a grassroots effort for many of our members of our community, including our students, our staff, our administrators, and our educational partners. The office of graduation will work and align 6 through 12 efforts in the preparation, relationship, and transition from our students from middle school to high school. And this grassroots effort timeline that you see here is our collective work. It's our journey that represents the span of the last nine months, in the design of the office of graduation, as well as the work of the Designing for a Meaningful Graduation work group. And over the past nine months, we have engaged in feedback loops with middle and high school leaders and their school sites on the support needed to reignite, enhance, and accelerate learning while ensuring our students are supported and have a meaningful experience. Our superintendent and deputy superintendent have led and encouraged site teams and central office teams in identifying equity challenges. And we have identified two constant equity challenges within our system, and that is 6 through 12 alignment and the need to pay attention to the work and the supports at the mid-level, but also graduation at the high school. And the questions that we posed is, what does a diploma really mean? And what does it mean to be a San Diego Unified graduate? And so with, I'm going to go to the next slide. With the support of 28 work group members, we have begun to explore the inequities that exist in our system as they pertain to graduation. Linda Darling-Hammon states that "When we listen closely with curiosity, courage, and humility, we gain a great understanding of the meaning and the root causes of our inequities." And that is exactly what our team has been working to lift. We are really going to be intentional, intentional and focused on hearing the voices of our students, their experiences, and their perspectives. So the work group that you see here has a composition of central office staff, counseling and guidance, high school administrators, DAC representatives, CAC representatives, DLEC representatives. We have parents and students that are a part of this work group committee. And the work group conducted empathy interviews with 17 students from seven different high schools across our district, and asked the five questions that you see on this slide. We're going to focus on the first question, and in a moment, we're going to share the perspective of a few, a few students on the first question. The first question reads, "What does the word meaningful mean when you hear the term meaningful diploma?" And as you listen to, to the voices of our students, please do so with curiosity. Their feedback and experiences matter, and their perspective will aid us in designing and supporting differently. I'm hoping I do this correctly. Nope. How do I push play?
My name's Izzy, I go to Patrick Henry, and a meaningful diploma to me means something that you're proud of, so when you're graduating, you can have like experiences that you're proud of, and you feel confident moving on to college, or your next step if college is not for you. So something that you're proud of, and that you've worked hard for for four years.
Hi, my name is Lina, and I'm from Crawford High School. A meaningful diploma to me is a diploma that sets a student up for success. I'm a high school senior, so I have a few more months left before I get my diploma. It's not going to be meaningful to me until I feel like it's really set me up for a good future.
And to me, a meaningful diploma is something that is purposeful and like relevant to the real world right now. I think it's something that should go far beyond just my requirements, but also things that are going to prepare me for the real world. But yeah.
My name is Zaya Campbell, so I go to University City High School. To me, the word meaningful and meaningful diploma just means that I worked hard for it. I didn't spend all my classes just scraping by trying to pass them, actually put in as much effort as I could.
I guess to me, a meaningful diploma, the word meaningful, I think, also used a lot in like media, in terms of having real-world skills that you can, you learn in school and you can apply to the rest of your future. I think it's, for a meaningful diploma, I think school really teaches like hard work and dedication, and the resourcefulness needed to like learn a subject. Although a subject might not be like directly correlated with like a future profession, it teaches you like how to actually, the skills needed to become proficient in something. And I think that's what a meaningful diploma should teach you.
When I hear the word meaningful, it means something special to me, something that I hold dearly to my heart, something that I put a lot of my time, my energy, like my everything. something that I hold dearly to my heart, something that I put a lot of my time, my energy, like my everything into. So when I hear the term meaningful diploma, it's like you really like worked your hardest and persevered and like went through every heavy thing, light, easy, different, like everything that like affected you in your path. You made it through and you made sure that like nothing was going to stop you from getting this diploma.
Thank you both.
A meaningful diploma to me might mean like, you know, it adds meaning to it. Like maybe like what you can do with a diploma, you know, like you could go farther in your journey as a person like, you know, with a diploma.
So I heard the words proud, sets up for success, purposeful, relevant, furthers one in their journey as a person. I think it's important to note that our students' words matter, their perspective and their experiences matter. And we have the responsibility to reconstruct and redesign school and support our students in their success. We have a 40-minute video which we'll be sharing with the board that documents each of their perspectives and experiences with those five questions that were posed. But at this time, I would, I'm now going to turn it over to my colleague, Roman, who will share satellite data, more specifically graduation rates and trends. But he will also add on to the work and design of the Office of Graduation and how we've been designing and supporting our middle schools and high schools differently.
Thank you, Dr. Roberson. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Jackson. It's an honor to be here and sharing some satellite data with you. My name's Roman Del Rosario. I joined the San Diego Unified family in October. So I still have the new director smell. So what you're seeing here is some graduation and A through G completion data for the class of 2022 four-year cohort, starting from left, San Diego Unified, San Diego County, and state, with the light blue being the graduation rate and the darker being the A through G completion rate. And as you can see, our graduation rate is pretty much on par with the state average. Couple points, a point and a half higher than the county average. And you also see a considerable difference in our A through G completion rate with 68% for the class of 2022, 58% at the county, and 51% at the state. But wait a minute, you might ask. I thought San Diego Unified's graduation requirements were the same as the A through G requirements, aren't they? So we're going to take a little time to explain some of the differences. You know, and in some ways, our San Diego Unified graduation diploma is more rigorous than the UC A through G requirements. For instance, we have a three-year science requirement where the UCs have a two-year. We also have the ethnic studies requirement, PE. But one of the major distinctions that I want to draw your attention to is at the bottom there is in order for a student to fulfill their graduation requirements, they're required to receive a grade of a D or better in these 44 graduation requirements where the UCCSUs require a C or better. That's a significant difference with significant implications. Additionally, I want to point to the far right column, the state minimum requirements. So for some time now, there's been groups of students that have been eligible to receive diplomas by fulfilling the state minimum requirements, but with the issues related to the pandemic and academic achievement, that became an option for more of the students, particularly in the class of 2022, to be able, as a safety net, to be able to complete the graduation requirements. And those are significant differences. If you, if you look up there, instead of four years of English, it's three years of English, the state minimum requirement. Instead of three years of math, it's two years of math. So what we're doing here is we're unpacking our graduation requirement. And although we know that we have comparable graduation requirements to the state and county average, what you see is this persistent gap, this persistent gap that existed far left, 2019, through the pandemic and after the pandemic, where not all student groups are performing at the same level. And I really want to draw your attention to the far right. We have our English learners and our students with disabilities. So that's a considerable gap that you see between the graduation rates with their, with the other, between them and the other student groups. Now, this slide also shows graduation rates, but we added it to show the trend. So I think it's, it's something worth noting that during this pandemic, COVID, graduation rates stayed relatively stable for most student groups. In addition, I think by and large part by AB 104 and students qualifying for the state minimum, we even saw some increases between the class of 2021 and the class of 2022. And I think notable in this slide is the increases that you see there with our students with disabilities between 2019 and 2022. And you also see a drop in the graduation completion rate of our English learners between 2019 and 20, and then a stabilization in their graduation rates. So now we're going to A through G completion rate for the same cohort, class of 2022. And what jumps out is a little bit more of a profound gap that we see in completion rates with that persistent gap existing before the pandemic, during the pandemic, and after the pandemic. But again, we want to point out in the far right-hand corner, our students with disabilities and our English learners. And if you look at this trend, it's, it's pretty stark when you look at our English learners. In 2019, their A through G completion rate and the big drop that you see between 2019 and 2020, a little bit of an increase, and then again, another big drop. So this, this is something that we're well aware of, and it's like many of the issues that we talk about, where those groups that are often in the margins are really at the center of our decision-making and our discussions. So now I want to jump to our current seniors, the class of 2023. We ask our counselors to do grad checks every year and to determine if a student were to pass all the courses that they're currently enrolled in, are they on track to graduate? So currently, 94% of our students, if they were to successfully complete their graduation, the courses they're enrolled in right now with a D or higher, they would graduate. Of course, that's a big if. Not all students will pass all their classes. But of those 94%, 6 and 1/2% have already completed their requirements for graduation. Those are students that we call early grads. The lion's share of the graduates will graduate in June, with some students benefiting from various assembly bills. On the bottom right-hand corner, you could see that there's assembly bills for students that are in foster care, students that are experiencing homelessness, military, students that are recently left the court schools and newcomers to our, to the United States. These various assembly bills constitute about 1% of our anticipated graduates. In addition, there are some students that aren't on track to graduate in June, but they are on track to graduate by the end of summer. And that 3% certificate of completion, that represents the students with moderate to severe disabilities. Now, I really want to, it's important to point out that not all of our schools have the same percentage of students with moderate to severe disabilities. And often, that's reflected in lower graduation rates in those schools that have higher numbers of students with moderate to severe disabilities because those students are not counted as part of the graduating cohort. And then you have our students that are projected to be non-grads, many of whom are eligible to return based on our own policies for a fifth year, particularly our English learners and students with disabilities. So before we end, I want to spend a little time talking about our guiding principles for student-centered scheduling. This board adopted these principles in March of 2022. And these principles really come to life when we're looking at data, when we're building master schedules, when we're designing our tutoring, credit recovery programs. But I want to ground this work of access, inclusion, and targeted support in a real example taking place right now at our schools. And this is an example of a dashboard that was designed for each school. So it's a custom dashboard that each high school counseling staff and administration currently has. And what you're seeing here is one school where they have the ability to look at the school-wide diversity compared to students enrolled in advanced studies courses. So in this particular case, 42% of the school's total population is what we have labeled BIPOC, which includes Latinx, Black students, American Indian, and Pacific Islander students. Now, principals and site teams have the ability to easily filter and to see how does that school-wide diversity compare to the students taking AP courses? How does it compare to students taking IB courses? How does it compare to students taking honors courses in dual enrollment? And not just that program at large, but going down to the specific course. So in this school, for instance, where 42% of the school is part of that BIPOC group, if we look at just the AP Modern History course, 17% of the students are BIPOC. So in addition to understanding where we are in terms of access and inclusion, the same dashboard, you see on the top, it has four tabs, this outreach planning. A question that we may have is if the students are not taking AP Modern History, what courses are they taking instead of that? And what you see here is a list from that same school filtered by GPA. So this is students with a 3.0 GPA or higher that elected to take a non-weighted option. So, and these are all Latinx, Black, Pacific Islanders, and American Indian students. So this school has 45 students with 3.0 and above taking a non-weighted option. So to get to our framework of street data, the next question is why? You know, why are students choosing to take these paths when there's evidence to suggest that they're able to rise to the challenge and be successful? And that's where we're really leaning into our empathy work. So sites are in the process of interviewing these students and really asking those questions. What was that experience like when you signed up for your classes? How did you find out about those courses? Did you ever consider taking them? What supports could have been offered so that you could have been encouraged to take on that extra support, extra level of rigor? And I want to just be 100% clear that this is not about decreasing the number of students in advanced courses, it's about increasing. This is about increasing the students, and this is not about lowering expectations or rigor. That is a constant. The variable is the support that students get, whether it's social, emotional, encouraging them to take on this rigor, or academic support. That's the variable. And what we know and we collectively believe is that our students will rise to the challenge and will be closer to our guiding principles of access, inclusion, and targeted support. So with that, that concludes the formal part of our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from board members? I think Dr. Whitehurst Payne is...
I'm going to be nice, going to let you first.
Trustee Nepa Messino, go first.
First of all, thank you so much for your presentation. So, pardon me. On Slide 7, where you presented the video of students responding to the question you posed, what does a meaningful diploma mean to you? I saw many familiar faces, you know, Albert, Lina, Lily, et cetera, all of which are very involved, active student leaders. So I was curious, what was the selection process for these empathy interviews? And were perhaps students that may not be as involved in their school communities interviewed as well?
Thank you for that question. This was our first iteration of conducting the empathy interviews. And so what we have done is we've showcased this work with our workgroup, with instructional cabinet, other central office leaders. And so what, what has come out of that is we really want to create a facilitation guide in which our site leaders are conducting the same empathy interviews with their own student groups at their own sites. So we're currently in the process of creating a facilitation guide, a lift and learn, if you will, for them to facilitate this amongst various student groups at their campus.
Guess I'm next.
Hey, Dr. Trust, Dr. Whitehurst Payne.
Yes, I'm not your husband's physician. Okay. On page 14, this, these are good data. But I, of course, have a lot of questions. And I'll just start with a few of them. On page, well, let's do 14 first. The drops, you talked about it. What specifically are you doing? Do you have that enumerated, what you're going to do?
Well, we're expecting an increase in our A through G completion with our English learners. As I explained, that in previous years, the law of the land was AB 104, where many students were able to still qualify for a high school graduation without completing the minimum, without completing the district requirements. And since our district requirements do mirror the UCs with, and many of the students are expected to complete those graduation requirements, we are definitely expecting students to increase in their grades. But a big part of the work that, that we do in the Office of Secondary, and specifically, it was part of very clearly defined in the job description when I applied for the job, is, is we need to make sure more students, particularly those historically marginalized students, fulfill those A through G graduation requirements. And ultimately, they need to take the right classes. They need to get Cs or better in those courses. We can't wait until senior year to remediate the Fs. That needs to start early. And we need to have options for students so that if they do get a D or F, we're able to, you know, if a student can't go to summer school, we have to find alternative options. So that's a large part of the planning that we're doing with the A through G access funding.
But I hear you saying, we need to, we need to, we've needed to for a long time. What specifically? Because I know some of us feel like pulling the, these strands we have left in our head for hair out because it's not, it's not happening. And it seems like we're, I know you don't have any. And that's probably why. But... Guys caught me on the wrong note here, but anyway. The bottom line is, we know what we need to do. But what specifically are you going to do? And the counselors have taken the heat for it because we say we've got all these counselors out there and they're not doing counseling work or whatever. But a lot of them are spending their time programming or scheduling students and so forth. So how are you here, sitting here today, going to do something that's remarkably different that hasn't happened so far?
That's a great question. I'll answer it, and my colleague here also has some, something to, some things to add. But we are currently doing things differently. For instance, if, if we have a progress report where a teacher has, where students, 40, 50% of students have earned Ds or Fs, something that we're doing with our principals is having conversations on, on, you know, that's, that's a problem. You know, the students not passing at that rate. And, and we need to look at the data and really understand, what is it that those students need? What support does that teacher need, those students need, so that students can bring that grade up before that F? And that's some of the work that we've done already in training our principals, looking at data. Dr. Bagula has, has often talked about making data more accessible, two clicks. And really, that's something that's been a mantra for us, is the data needs to be, make sense. It needs to be in a format that, that teams at the site could build meaning. And more importantly, stakeholders at the sites need to be able to take action immediately on that data. You know, it just can't be after the fact. And I also think that an important part of this conversation is not, you know, absolutely not waiting till they got the DNF and trying to figure out how to remediate, but prevent those Ds and Fs. And that work is taking place now. Part of our work with the Office of Graduation is also to bring on additional staff to help facilitate development of actionable data dashboards. And that's something that we've spent a lot of time getting input from the sites as we develop that and design that initiative.
And a thing that I would like to add, starting in December, we worked closely with all middle and high school sites on creating goals around access, inclusion, and targeted support for their site schedule build. So it's a lot of technical work that goes into building a site schedule. And so we have now partnered with our middle and high schools in ensuring that we are building a site schedule that allows for our students to have access to A through G. One of the things, last year, for example, SEPA, we partnered in transforming and moving the school from a block schedule to a four-by-four schedule. And we see the benefits of a four-by-four schedule. schedule. Morse, this year, just voted to go from a traditional six-period schedule to a four-by-four. So our office is really working alongside many of our middle schools and high schools in thinking about scheduling different, because we know that the six-period traditional schedule is not beneficial and is very impactful to a student's trajectory at middle and high.
Well, on page fifteen, if you'll just take a look at that, non-grads, you say you have three percent, and that's independent of the Certificate of Completions, who usually are the special education students. So let's just step back. We know right now, we have one-hundred-eighty-nine students who are on track not to graduate. So what are you doing? What's your plan?
A portion of those students will be eligible to come back for a fifth year. Many of the non-grads have to do with when they arrive to our schools, and they're unable to complete the requirements in the time allotted or things related to their IEPs. But that's definitely a great question that we have to address. That's a lot of students that are not, currently not on track to graduate.
And we know about the newcomers, we're working on them who are in that three percent of percent of the one-hundred-eighty-nine.
And I think to Jen and Roman's point is, and to your point, Dr. Whitehurst Payne, we need to disaggregate even the one-eighty-nine and really drill down to how many students are non-grads that started on time, right, versus a student who walks in, who's seventeen and doesn't have the time and won't meet the needs. And so I think, as you say, it's a, it's a great point. Disaggregating that down a little bit more would be very helpful to addressing that. And so that we can then have a plan for each and every child. As we heard the students, that's meaningful for the future. So I think as we take that question back, you know, I would encourage us to disaggregate that down a little bit more, and I think that'll answer some of your questions.
Yes, couple more questions, okay, if I may. Also, on page fifteen, you have the early grads there, three-hundred-ninety-one of them. Was it this week, Marty? Was I in your office and a parent was complaining? Yes. A Lincoln parent was complaining about the fact that we're letting, as she said, we're letting the babies out early, and they need to, quote, "stay in and get some more education." What do we do to appear? Are we encouraging students maybe to stay and take a college class, or how are we handling these three-hundred-ninety-one students?
So that's something that we can look into system-wide, because each school handles early graduates in a different manner. So I can give you an example of a, this morning, conversation with Morse, because right now, Morse is conducting individualized counseling sessions with students who wish to early grad next year and are mapping out their plans with their families. They will not allow a student to early grad if there isn't a plan in place, meaning the student is working to support their family, they're going to a certification program, or attending college directly after the early grad at the end of January. So we are working as a system, our office, in supporting each of our high schools to ensure there is a plan in place for every student upon being an early graduate. We don't want to just early grad students and have them go out to society without a plan, or to have something meaningful in place for them.
And I think that's the, that's the important piece between satellite data, map data, and street data, because some of our early grads are in college. Some have graduated early, and that is a benefit to the four-by-four. You can actually put together a schedule where you can actually be done. However, we need to encourage internships. We want to encourage taking extended learning sciences, different courses, and I know the Office of Graduation has been in conversation. So again, that's another one of these data points where you can disaggregate, and it tells more of the story when you're looking at individual students. I met a young man today, he was a Madison student, he, early grad, he's an athlete, he's going off to pursue his, his college career, but he's an early grad, so he would fall into these data, so.
And then page five, the, this is, of course, District Eight, but I was wondering whether or not these students would benefit if they were assigned a one-on-one mentor in or out of the system. I was at the Elementary Institute of Science today, and they're bringing in partners to really get involved with students, so, anyway, just tossing it out, it's a possibility. I know I've taken up more than my time, but thank you very much.
All right, let's go down here and see, trustee Cotoriano.
Thank you, I just want to say this was a wonderful presentation first. I just wanted to get a little bit of clarity on a couple of things. So first, with regards to the data collection system that was referenced earlier, with regards to BIPOC students, I think it's a wonderful initiative to be able to collect that data in a meaningful and accessible way. Can you kind of give, I guess just some more clarity about, say I'm a principal and I get that data, I see that, for example, the AP World History course is disproportionately non-BIPOC students. What would the next steps be, and what would the next steps according to your training plan be?
So we've developed a protocol that's really based on the assumption that those closest to the work understand the problem most clearly, and they're best equipped to diagnose what the next steps are. But step one is understanding where they are. So we're encouraging site leaders to not work in isolation, but to work with counselors, teacher leaders, and to go through their programs, to go through their courses, and see where they are in terms of our goals of access and inclusion. We defined this board, inclusion is the diversity of school, of the school reflected in every classroom. That was something that we used to define inclusion. This dashboard that was developed for the school sites has four different tabs to it. I showed you two of the tabs. One of them, the next tab is called proportionality, and it gives the ability to site, site teams to see, this year, twenty-two, twenty-three, how many additional Black, Latinx students would have needed to enroll in each specific course to have proportionality in terms of the diversity of school? Not for the sake of, you know, having any type of quota, but just understanding, is it two or three kids? Is it twenty kids? Is it forty kids? So those are conversations and good data for the sites to have. And the next step, one of the tabs is showing grade distributions at semester. I think often what you hear from students when you do this empathy work is they, they may say, "I don't see myself as an AP student," or "That course is too hard." If we pulled that, pull back the curtain, and in this dashboard, it makes it very easy to see, many of our AP honors classes have ninety-five, ninety-eight percent As and Bs. And that's helpful information if I'm a little bit timid about taking on this additional rigor, that's important context for site leaders to have. And then finally, the purpose of, of the last tab that I shared, where you are able to identify GPA in students that elected to take non-weighted courses, isn't just to hear from those students on why they didn't, but it's really to, to arm ourselves as a site team with the information to then reach out at our freshmen. So if I'm hearing from current sophomores with three-point-fives, three-point-sevens, three-point-eights, all these reasons why they didn't want to take AP Modern History, the next step is to use multiple measures to identify a broader swath of students that we know will be successful, and now we have their voices, and we understand what their concerns are, and it'll only better equip us to have those conversations and to say, "Mijo." You know, it's a powerful thing when a student hears, "Your principal, your teacher, your counselor, we all know you could do it, and we're gonna be there for you." And instead of having to learn that lesson in college, where there is no safety nets, and it's, you know, academic probation, and you're out, they're learning that importance of taking on enhanced rigor in a setting where we could support them.
Awesome, thank you. I just wanted to kind of follow up, something you said was really interesting, like, the focus on connections and talking to students and having conversations is something that I'm really thankful for and I really want to highlight. I think my only concern is just, are the supports there for staff? I want to ensure that we're, is the training there? Is the development happening for staff that will be having conversations so they have the skills? And are their workloads too much? Because I'm worried that, you know, there'll be, there's a lot of, there won't be enough time to have deep conversations and collect real data.
But let me, I'm gonna jump in here. I think that's the important part of this work that, that they're leading, is focusing on what the students need and allowing the sites to determine what they need to keep on their plate and what they, what they need to let go. And so are we there yet? No. Is everyone where we want them to be? No. But I think this is a very important conversation, as Jen and Roman said, is, it's getting data in their hands. It's identifying the students, what are their needs? And then that should then drive us, as we think about growth and development, what do my students need? What is it that I'm able to provide? And what is it that I need support in? And then how do we provide that support? That is critical work. Instead of doing this broad, "Everyone gets this," and that's the work they're leading. So that, I want to, I want to speak to that. That's our intention, but I'm gonna answer clearly, no, not yet.
And if I could just add, and piggyback on that, you know, all the work that we do, it's based on that framework of continuous improvement. And it really is that journey that we're on, to reflect, to try to do better for our students, and we're definitely not there, but we're definitely know that we're on a journey together. One of the things I shared with my colleagues, as someone who's new to the system, entered from a different district, is that some folks, I think, have no idea what it feels like to be part of a, a group that's values-driven. And that's a new thing for me, and it's something that I just, I'm very in awe of being in a, in a place where it's very clear in the hallways, at the schools, that the work that we do is driven by our values.
Thank you. I just had one final clarifying question. Sorry. When, when we're, when the, there was a list of graduation requirements according to San Diego Unified, according to UCs, and according to the state, I just want to, the language here is a little unclear under sciences, where it says three years, and yet it lists four different classes. I just wanted to get a little bit of clarity on language. I'm not sure I totally understand this.
So the current graduation requirements for San Diego Unified is three years, with one year of biology, one year of chemistry, one year of physics, and the current administrative regulation allows for replacing one of the years of the physical science with another approved CTE science course or dual enrollment course. So that's the San Diego Unified current science requirements, where the CSUs, it's, it depends on whether it's CSU or UC. The CSUs are one biological science, one physical science, and that physical science could be either chemistry or physics. And the UCs are, they identify biology, chemistry, physics as a foundation, and you have to pick two of those in order to meet your A-through-G requirements.
Awesome, thank you so much.
And we have trustee Hazen.
Thank you, and it's exciting to see the data that you've shared, and it feels new, so appreciate that. Question, so I heard mention of more schools moving to a four-by-four schedule. Is there any context in which that wouldn't be the direction we would encourage our high schools to move toward?
Thank you for asking that. I have a preference, but it takes, it takes a lot of conversation with regards to the understanding of the benefits to a four-by-four, and it's a lot of educating of staff members, administrators, and so we're working on that now. And so we've, we've had conversations with Canyon Hills and Marah Mesa thus far on exploring different possibilities, but that then, we backwards plan, so for example, I'll keep honing in on Morse.
Can I, so you said I have a, your preference would be that everybody have a four-by-four schedule?
My personal preference, as an educational leader, practitioner, is a four-by-four. I've seen the impacts. There are four-by-four schools that do it differently, hybrid, AB. I'm a fan of straight quarters for remediation, acceleration, doing magical things within a four-by-four. And research also shows that a block schedule of some sort is more, more impactful for students.
Thank you. And so I appreciate the question previously about disaggregating data around non-graduates. I'm also wondering if we can see disaggregated data around early graduates? Particularly, a curiosity I have is around, you described this group of BIPOC students out of school, right, earning a three-point-oh or higher. Are some of our early graduates, those students who, if given the opportunity to take APs or honors or weighted classes, would still be there? And would they be better off? And I say that because I've spoken to students for whom that's the case. So curious around that. And then lastly, so I know we led with the goals and metrics, do we have information how we're performing against them? So I know we sort of heard about some of them, but not all of them?
Yes, so we can follow up, and perhaps a board memo with how we're progressing on each of those. We selected for this presentation, so, actually, let me take a step back. At our next joint board meeting on March twenty-first, some of these metrics will be shown, because it's a part of our joint partnership goals, and we do, we will report out on those.
With the community colleges.
With our community colleges, and more specifically around CTE courses. We are tracking, so, it's not shown, we do a, Roman has built some phenomenal databases, if you will, and we track, as he mentioned, students' grades. And so we are actively monitoring grades, students earning C or higher in courses, and so we can provide that follow-up. For this presentation, we chose to focus on the graduation rate. So you'll notice that our baseline was at ninety-point-four, we had anticipated ninety-one. Currently, with projected, it was ninety-four, with some potential to adjust.
And so, I look forward to seeing the data, and I don't know if you know off the top of your head, but are there any areas on this goals and metrics list where it's not the overperforming, the way you described graduation, right? Any areas where we're struggling and we should be paying particular attention to?
I mean, as pointed out in the presentation, even though we're over, even though we have a significantly higher A-through-G than our county and state average, those, when you look at those A-through-G completion of our English learners and students with disabilities, I think that's a major area of concern. The A-through-G access success grant that we were awarded, it was actually San Diego Unified, to my understanding, didn't qualify for the grant based on our current completion rate, because it was so high. But the reason we qualified for that grant funding was because of the difference that existed between the various student groups. So that definitely is gonna be something that we continue to build out systems of support.
And then I just want to lift, an area of growth for us as a district is our CTE course completion rates. And so that then, for me, when I'm looking at site schedules, there is an impact to whether someone could be a completer on a six-period traditional day. Because of our PE requirements, the loss of the fitness program waiver, your tenth-grade year as a high school student is greatly impacted on a six-period day. And so many students start their CTE pathway at ninth grade, have to fall back their tenth grade due to the requirements, and may or may not pick up on it their eleventh-grade year. Whereas on a four-by-four quarter, you're, you have more ease and can make that adjustment the following term.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Pedersen.
I have a sort of a pretty simple, but abstract question about this, which is, and this has a lot of feedback with item five, the significant disproportionality item that we have, obviously, in a lot of ways. And you're now talking about what we're doing in sort of the last phase, on a trajectory that was established, now we're establishing in TK is the trajectory, and we're doing some fine-tuning in the last four years, so obviously, very important fine-tuning. But one of the, one of the things that occurs to me is the, is a, is a common factor when you're talking about six-through-twelve alignment, and you're talking about dual enrollment, potentially, or CTE, and meaningful graduation that students are on, is in a way, we're talking about getting the handoffs right. You know, we, when you're in the thing itself, when you're in the year, ninth grade, when you're in tenth grade, presumably... ninth grade, when you're in 10th grade, presumably nine to 12, your principal's paying attention to the handoffs between grades or, and, and their staff and senior leadership and their counselors. But how do we staff the gaps? How do we staff the handoffs? That is to say, you finish elementary school, how are we staffing that moment of handing off? You finished middle school, how are we staffing that moment? Because you do all this work, it must be Lao Tzu or something that says, you know, many great projects fail because you lose attention at the final step of it. And the same kind of goes for, for, for CTE. And I think this is one of the strengths of dual enrollment, that you, we are working on getting that handoff right. And that's really when you're talking about meaningful graduation, graduation, you're really talking about, are we going to get that final handoff right? How are we staffing that handoff in particular at graduation? Which is really a post-graduation question, but how are we, how are we doing that?
Who's that? That's a lot to ponder. We, I don't have, do you have an answer?
Well, I know that's, that's one of the primary benefits of having an office of graduation that's, that's focused on secondary. And this board adopted the org chart that brings in more resources to bear for specific that reason, specifically for that reason, to have coherence. What we're hearing from our site leaders is you might have one feeder middle school that didn't necessarily even have some of the same articulated programs and they had different emphasis. And in some cases, we heard stories of middle schools with 100 students wanting dual language, but the high school only equipped to take 30 of them. And that, that's really something that is front and center by having an office of graduation that's focused on, you know, both the middle years and the high schools.
And do you feel like, so in a, in a way, what you're saying is that's us, we're staffing the handoffs. And so then the follow-up question is, do you feel adequately staffed to provide our 200-plus sites that are all at various levels of those, between those handoffs? Do you feel adequately staffed to provide that kind of guidance?
Our team is small but mighty.
You're ready for politics.
Yes. We, we have a very brilliant team that trust and lean on one another and we do amazing things together. So I do think that we have the capacity with the current team to do the work that, that we're talking about this year.
Dr. Pedersen. Trustee Barrera.
Thank you, President Bazo. So first of all, welcome aboard, Ramon. We're, I know this is the first time you've done a formal presentation here, but we've heard all about you and we're, we're very, very excited about what you bring to the table and of course, being part of Jen's team. Couple of things. One is that what's interesting about the conversation, the empathy conversations that we're having with students, and I appreciate trustee Nepomuceno's focus on expanding that, you know, as, as we've got a plan to do to more students, is that the, kind of the instinct of our students about what meaningful graduation is mirrors what we hear from higher education and, and the workforce. So relevance, rigor, all of those things that we're hearing coming out of our students, even though they've yet to be, you know, in the, in the world of higher education or the workforce, is similar, you know, to what we hear. And so I think what that sets up is the opportunity to, in our individual conversations with students starting in middle school, you know, with students and parents, to kind of take them through, this is what the world considers meaningful graduation. And I think what that also challenges us to do, and I hear it, Jen, in your answer about four by four, is why would we offer the option to our students of non-meaningful graduation? So what exists within our system that we know does not contribute to meaningful graduation? And why would we continue with it? Why would that option be there? And, and I think that relates to kind of the, the second point that I would make, which is this journey around A to G completion rates, particularly, you know, A to G, you know, C or better, has been probably the biggest success story that I'm aware of in our, in our district's history. So when we started this journey in 2009, when we passed the policy of UC A to G for all, that UC A to G completion rate was 45%, you know, for the rest, for the entire district and among black and Latinx students, it was in the mid twenties. What happened was those numbers across the district actually got up to above 70. And as we see in the sort of pre-pandemic 2019 data among black and Latinx students and students in other subgroups, what we started to see was a pretty significant narrowing of that gap to the point that, you know, black and Latinx A to G completion rates were pretty close to what they were for the district as a whole. And so of course, the pandemic hit and it's knocked us backwards, but it should give us confidence, you know, and I think this is to Dr. Whitehurst Payne's questions, that it is certainly not impossible for us to go back. But that work, as we all know, was all about looking at the satellite data, but then getting to the street level data, student by student, transcript by transcript, and putting our students on the pathway that we knew would lead to meaningful graduation. And so what I, you know, what I think about is not only should we draw confidence from what we've been able to do and the way we've been able to do it and make progress. And I, you know, Ramon, your point about working from a core set of values, that has to, we can't make progress unless at all levels, we're working from a core set of values. And I think that was, you know, part of the, the successful journey that we saw pre-COVID. But I think it's also, boy, and, and we know, you know, the process and the challenge of bringing change, you know, to, to schools. But when we are pretty clear about what meaningful graduation is, both in terms of, you know, path to succeed in higher education, but also the career pathways, and they're not, you know, it's not an either or, but we know career pathways are an incredibly important pathway to meaningful graduation. When we know what that is, it seems part of our urgency is making sure that we're not even forcing students to make a choice. If you're enrolled in our schools, we're going to put you on a pathway to meaningful graduation because we, we know what it is. So sorry, I just wanted to get some thoughts about that.
I just must say this, I'm for pushing them even to the internship, developing that culture that we saw with the students from Lincoln High School, the football team, where we know from, I'm sure he picks them up in Pop Warner, that's what it's called, right? And he carries them all the way through to NFL. And I'm sure that's what Jeff Harper Harris is doing also with his baseball, I mean, basketball players. So that's what we should be doing with every subject area. And that's what I was telling the people at the Elementary Institute of Science today, people from Qualcomm, from General Atomix, from wherever they were from. We've got to bring everybody together, everybody's taken a group of students and we're going to get them all to this place that we're talking about. Good. Thank you.
Okay, one more comment from trustee Hazen. We need to kind of wrap this up. But, and then we have Dr. Jackson wants to make a comment and then we're going to.
So last quick comment along these lines is my hope that we bring parents and families along on this journey because I think it's great and we need to equip families with everything they need as early as possible. And I would say, starting in UTK, so that they know how to support their kids in getting to meaningful graduation.
I want to say thank you. Your first presentation under the Office of Graduation, that was approved two weeks ago. Thank you. Thank you to the entire staff. Well done.
I had, okay, I had just had an observation more than anything else. You guys all got to talk for a long time. No, it's just not, it's not in, I don't know if it's really a question, but I was actually out at Wagenheim Middle School, this was probably about three weeks ago, with principal Met Fallon, and he shared, we went into the English Language Learners classroom and it was a smaller group. And some of the things that they were doing there, I thought were really interesting. He, she's using like music and instead of just having them read stories, you know, it's more rhythmic and instrumental and music to help them with their reading. But one comment he made to me that really stood out and I wanted to share, because he's, he's an amazing principal, he said that a lot of students now because, with phones, they're not reading anymore. Like everything is on YouTube. And I thought, wow, that's so true. I mean, they're not, because if you need to learn how to read in another language, but you're not, you're just on your phone all the time on a video, then you're not reading. So I don't know, that's more of an observation or a comment. I don't know, you know, yeah, that, that, how to, you know, kind of address that, but I thought that was a really interesting point that he made from a seasoned middle school principal perspective. So, all right, thank you. Made the same comment, yes. Yeah, yeah, makes a lot of sense. All right, Bazo. We will now consider the board consent agenda items. F1, minutes of regular and special meetings. F2, resolution in the matter of recognizing Friday, March 31st, 2023 as Caesar Chavez Day of Service and Learning. Item F3, resolution in the matter of support of the University of California San Diego Pathways to STEM Program. F4, material revision to the chapter, sorry, to the charter of Albert Einstein Academies to postpone the high school opening date to fall 2026. F5, significant disproportionality comprehensive coordinated early intervening services plan. And F6, authorization to excuse board member absences. Do we have a motion on items F1 through F6?
I move approval with a caveat that I understand F5 is coming back soon, like within a month. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion from Dr. Whitehurst Payne, second from trustee Nepomuceno. Okay, we'll start with the student board members. Trustee Nepomuceno.
Aye.
Trustee Cotoriano.
Aye.
All others? Okay, motion passed. We're dismissing one, but without trustee Pedersen. All right, we're moving on to items, agenda item G. We will now hear item G, 2023, 2024 Student Board Member Election Kickoff. Trustee Nepomuceno, please present the item.
I believe there should be a video attached. Whether it's school. Thank you.
You can run the video. Thank you.
Whether it's school lunches or the number of AP classes offered on campus, the Board of Education makes important decisions on your day-to-day life as a student. And as a student board member, you can be a part of that decision-making. Hi, my name is Leah. I currently serve as one of two student board members on the San Diego Unified School District Board of Education, which happens to be the second largest school district in the state of California. So what do I do as student board member? By definition, a student board member is a democratically selected member of the governing board of a school system who is simultaneously a student in that school system. The student board member is a representative of students in the same capacity that an adult board member represents a segment of the population. Student board members exist to unite and divide between the adults making decisions on behalf of students and the students themselves. In addition to all board meetings and official functions, the student board member is often a face of district students who will speak to the press and other officials on student opinions and sentiments. The term is for one school year. My current term, some of my focuses include restorative justice, campus police reforms, gun violence prevention, and of course, community and student empowerment. In action, this looks like putting forth resolutions such as Gun Violence Survivors Week Resolution with trustee Shayna Hazen, and also passing a resolution with my fellow student board member, trustee Cotoriano, on screen addiction. Additionally, establishment of district-wide student-led groups such as the Environmental Task Force, Police Youth Advisory Committee, and of course, very own Student Advisory Board, which is led by the student board members. Sounds interesting? Well, there are a few factors to keep in mind. Firstly, time commitment. Think of it as a part-time job of sorts. Expect to be devoting at least 10 to 15 hours per week. For me, this looks like independently reading material, understanding potential changes to policies, and most importantly, meeting with you, outstanding elementary, middle and high school students all across the district. So far, I've toured several schools where I shadow the ASB president and get an authentic day-in-the-life experience of a student attending that school. Secondly, transportation. Since the district is quite large, you'll be commuting quite a lot. Ensure that you're familiar with public transit or have access to a car or another reliable form of transportation. That being said, applications to get on the ballot open March 15th and close April 8th. Once your application is approved, expect an in-person and virtual forum where students will ask you about your campaign platform and why they should vote for you. Open elections will take place from 4:00 PM, April 27th to 5:00 PM, April 28th, 2023. If you have any questions whatsoever, please contact Siders@sandy.net. That's S-S-E-I-D-E-R-S@sandy.net. Good luck. Hope to see you soon.
Great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Did you have anything else to share about it or do we have any other questions?
That really concludes the item, but really I want to give a special thanks to Stacy and Lorena who helped in the production of the video. And really, I encourage everyone to apply. It's an incredible opportunity to have your voice heard and work with amazing individuals. It's a very fulfilling role and just a worthwhile experience. So if you have any questions, feel free to contact me. And of course, contact Stacy, which is the email that is showcased in the video. Thank you.
All right, fantastic.
I do not know yet, but I should know by May. So we'll see then. Thank you.
Still pending. Oh, did you have questions?
Yes. How are we sharing that video? Who's seeing it?
So far, I'm not sure. I know that something that I plan to do in the next few weeks is visit schools and hopefully either showcase the video or talk directly with students. But hopefully in either like core or advisory period, I'm sure I'll brainstorm ways with Communications Department on how we can get that video out.
Last year, we pushed it out to the high schools and they, they pushed it out. So
I just want to make sure, yeah.
Just the information and now this video, so.
Thank you.
But what about the middle schools? The eighth graders are eligible for the ninth grade year, right?
They are not.
They can't be in the ninth grade?
It's just ninth grade to, ninth grade to 10th, or sorry, ninth grade to 11th grade.
You have to be a currently enrolled high school student to apply. Okay. All right, trustee Cotoriano.
I just want to quickly thank you, trustee Nepomuceno, the team that put it together, Communications Department, Stacy Siders, Lorena Ford, for putting together this great video. I want to encourage everyone to apply. Thank you so much.
All right. We will now hear item H1, fiscal year 2223, second interim financial report in the matter of intent to declare positive certification at second interim. Superintendent Jackson and staff. Superintendent Jackson and staff, please present the item.
Thank you, President Bazo. Board trustees, this evening, we are asking that the Board approve the fiscal year 2223 Second Interim Fiscal Report with positive certification. Hello, Drew. Hello, Jody. Tonight's presentation will be a compilation of a review of the budget development, the potential impact of the governor's budget, and budget projections with potential shifts. So I'll turn it over to Jody and to Drew to present this. And I do want to acknowledge that we continue our state budget advocacy. And this is to ensure that we're maximizing the revenue that's coming in from the state level. And want to recognize Dr. C.R. Cook, our Director of Government Relations, who has been leading us through this work. Our advocacy includes making sure that we're meeting with key decision-makers in Sacramento. We are obviously opposing, and I say obviously because we need to oppose the Arts Block Grant. We want to support and really advocate for fully funded COLA, the Cost of Living Adjustment, as well as prioritization of the LCFF, the Local Control Funding Formula, along with urging a timeline for transitional kindergarten to go to the ratio of 1 to 10. So I think these are critical components that while not directly in this presentation, I want all the Board trustees to know that our work will continue. I'll turn it over to you all.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Good evening. Tonight, Ms. McCallas and I will present the district's Second Interim Financial Report. I think we always like to start with our budget development timeline and remind us where we are and where we're headed. So as you can see, we're in March. It's the Second Interim Report, and then the milestones ahead. The same report gets transmitted to our county office, and our county office has until April 15th to do their work of review and certification before they pass the report to the state. Then in May, one of the big milestones again is the governor's revise of the state budget, so we'll be watching that very closely. And then leading to June, where we'll see the, the state budget being finalized and our district being, or our district budget for the 2324 school year brought forward for a first and second reading. Just a, just a very simple breakdown of what constitutes the Second Interim Report. It is our financial transactions and activity from July 1st through January 31st of this year, actual transactions, and then projecting what we believe is going to play out from February 1st until June 30th. Again, it's based on the governor's proposed budget from January, what he put out in January for 2223 fiscal, 2324 fiscal year. We take aboard the guidance from the County Office of Education as well. And then this report that you see tonight actually captures three years, this year and the two following years. We wanted to touch on where we were in the first interim report that we provided to you. We had not captured the governor's proposed budget from January. So we wanted to make sure we show those changes and just articulate those here now. There's three, three key pieces that we highlighted. Cost of living adjustment, a slightly less than a 3% increase from first interim to now, going from 8.13%, or I'm sorry, going from 5.38% to 8.13%. What that translates to for us, that 3% change is about $29 million in ongoing funding. The next bullet there is, is a new item within the governor's budget called an equity, called the Equity Multiplier, which was really intended to focus on, focus additional resources at the highest of highest need schools across the state. Based on the, the assessment that is used to qualify as one of those schools earning the Equity Multiplier, we only have one school within our district, that's Horton Elementary School. And again, the estimate now is that the school would receive an additional $330,000 in funding. And then again, as the superintendent touched on, we saw a reduction through this budget process. We saw a reduction in one of our one-time funding sources, the Arts and Music and Instructional Materials Discretionary Block Grant, it was, as it was called. It's estimated to decrease by $19 million from $57 million to $38 million. With that, I'll hand off to Jody to dig into the numbers a little bit more.
Okay, thank you. On the next couple of slides, you're going to see the assumptions that we use as we're building our projections. So the first slide is our revenue assumptions. You can see that we use our funded ADA, which is based on a three-year average. We have our enrollment numbers, the COLA, and as Drew mentioned, we are showing the increase in COLA for the 2324 year to the 8.13%. And then in 2425, because of the increase in the 2324, the 2425 year has dropped down just a little bit to offset the increase. And then just some other items that we take into account when we're working on our general fund and restricted revenue projections. Next slide. We wanted to show you that historically, our district, like many districts in the state of California, have, had seen declining enrollment year over year. And this is just a snapshot of what it's looking like for us. Currently, we are seeing a little bit of an uptick in the 2223 year, and that is as we are expanding our UTK program and then also some COVID recovery that we're seeing. Our assumptions for expenditures, most of these are our standard assumptions. We have our step and column increase for both certificated and classified. There's our annual increases, our contributions for the STIRS and PERS. We also have year-over-year increases in our health and welfare premiums. And then just some others as cost of doing business, utilities, and then just some materials and supplies. And then something else we wanted to highlight is that in our projections, we have built in a proposed salary increase of 6.56%. We're noting that the bargaining is in progress, and this has been passed to some of our units. Taking into account the assumptions that I just presented, we are projecting positive ending balances for the current year and our two out-years, looking at ending balance for 2223 of 144 million, and then 120 million and 51 million for the next two consecutive And then sharing once again our slide on our state and federal funding, this is all one-time funding that has been received. And we have highlighted the amounts that have been 100% spent and what has currently been spent and what is committed. And we will meet all of our spending deadlines and fully intend to spend all of the dollars that we have received. And then we're also, as Drew mentioned, and the decrease in the Arts and Music Instructional Block Grant has decreased from 57 million down to the proposed 38 million. And then just some highlights for the state budget and the economy. You know, currently our projections are based on the January's proposed, on the governor's January proposal. And then things will also change again. We'll see changes when the May revise comes out, and then we might also see some changes once the state budget is enacted. And then something that is significant, in February, the Department of Finance reported that state revenues were already down 3.3 billion from what they had projected just a month prior to that. And then School Services of California is, is just calling attention that we should, given the current economic indicators, that we, there may be some difficulty ahead as they prepare for the May revision. And then one other thing that we have all recently experienced is significant changes in our weather. And due to that, there's a delay in filing of our income tax returns. And the governor's budget, the May revise relies heavily on the April tax revenues that come in. So given this year that it's now been shifted from April to October, they will be, you know, our budget is going to be prepared, not really knowing what kind of revenues are going to be coming in. So we just, it's just want to call out that we need to be mindful of, you know, how that's going to, how that's going to play out.
Thanks, Jody. I think, as we know, the second interim is just a point in time, and we're talking about all these things, and there's, again, potential for a lot of changes yet to come. So we just provide here a collection of there, of the potential shifts affecting potentially our revenues and our expenditures. Most notably would be the governor's final budget, and we'll have to see how that plays out. As Jody mentioned, the state is going to have a difficult time trying to build their budget when we have, they have a lot of unknowns about the revenue, the tax revenues. Some of the other items that we do consider or will consider as we continue to work through it is collective bargaining, our expansion of UTK, which is obviously is a very good thing, and how that will drive our attendance, and other, and those other things that'll come with that. I think I'll leave it at that. So in summary, we are presenting a positive, a balanced budget for the current and two subsequent years, reflecting a positive certification. We want to be mindful of the one-time money of its uses and how we spend that down. What we do see across the state is that many districts are dealing with compensation, collective bargaining, and how that, how all that works, and how, again, do we remain competitive? And then just one last reminder that the state's budget will be interesting to watch and just see how we, how we end up with all of it. And I believe, let me see, pressing the wrong button. Our recommendation to the Board is to approve the FY 2223 Second Interim Financial Report with a positive certification. Thank you.
Thank you to both of you.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions or comments? I'll start over here with Trustee Dr. Pedersen.
Sorry, just very briefly, just to reiterate the question from January in relation to the block grants. Will, will that proposed reduction impact our, in particular, Russ Spurling's vision for Prop 28 funds? Or, or is, are those block grants in practice so unrestricted in practice that we've actually used them for things other than, yeah?
That second part of what you said is true. So, so yes, this isn't talking Prop 28. This is one-time money, has a long name, but really, when you get into the legal requirements of it, there are very few, and there is talk that it was intended to be a, kind of a universal source of funding. We had it, it's available to use until 2526, so we were watching and seeing how we would phase that in. What happened with the state was 50% of the funding has already been provided to districts. The second half was supposed to come in May, and that's where it gets into this of maybe you're not going to see quite as much as you thought. So that's how that, as we see it play out for right now.
Just a quick question. Dr. Whitehurst Payne.
STIRS and PERS. STIRS seems to be stabilizing at, what, 19.1, and PERS is still going up?
Yes.
Is there a known limit?
Sorry. I forget. Trustee Barrera.
Yeah, thank you, Drew and Jody. First of all, make a motion.
Yes, yes, sorry, forgot to do that. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a sec, by Trustee Barrera, and a second by Dr. Whitehurst Payne.
And I just want to draw attention, I appreciate the slide about the proposed Equity Multiplier. And so the governor proposes $300 million in his budget to go to the Equity Multiplier, which, and we've talked about this before with other, you know, kind of sources, if that was distributed according to the LCFF formula, we would get between five and six million dollars. We'd probably get more because we're a concentration district, and that's the point of the Equity Multiplier. Instead, we're, under the rules that they've set up for the Equity Multiplier, we're getting $330,000 for one school. So, and I know that this is a conversation that we need to have with the legislators, but we saw this with Community Schools Grant, and now it's, again, there's a disconnect between the goal of the program, which is to provide support for, you know, high-need schools, and the reality of who's going to get money from this program, given the way that the, you know, that the rules are set out. So that's going to need to, you know, be a source of ongoing advocacy on our part.
Very good point, Trustee Barrera, and we will be speaking with some of our folks this week, as a matter of fact, and that is something we'll be bringing up, because that, we need to see more funds.
Yeah.
And else? Trustee Hazen.
I have a question around the Impact Aid projections, because I thought we were no longer eligible based on the enrollment threshold, but I see it in here for 10 million for the next two years. Is that, are we eligible or not?
So we are still eligible.
Okay.
And a portion of that 10 million is, we get about four and a half million to about 4.7 million for property. So there's, it's two components. There's the property component, and then there's the, the student component. So we are still eligible, we're still doing our federal survey form every year, and the, there is a, when you drop below a certain enrollment number.
Right, that's my question around the 85,000.
And, and that's where, we have been qualified because of the current threshold, and we know with declining enrollment, that's where the concern is, and that's why we're, we're asking folks in Congress to consider our district. And the interesting thing is, Dr. C.R. Cook has done the analysis, and the interesting thing is, no other district's going to be impacted but us. I believe Alaska has some. Because, you know, if we think about the large districts, you also have to think about military towns. So it's, it's both and. And so this would not hurt any or help any other districts besides us.
Then we need to really lobby and fuss about that. I mean, that's unfair.
Fussing has started.
That's not fair. We're not going to be isolated.
I'm also wondering about the, I'm wondering if our 2324 enrollment includes the addition of new UTK classrooms? I know interest has been really great this year, and I'm wondering if any of that interest and potentially more UTK students than anticipated is reflected here.
Go ahead.
So yes, the enrollment is included, but what you will see is, is these enrollment numbers are the enrollment numbers that we use to calculate the ADA that we can be funded on. So this is not our entire district enrollment. So there is a portion of UTK students that, since we have opened it up to all four-year-olds, there's a portion of them that don't qualify for the funding. But yes, we have built that in.
And I, I think to your point, though, I think that is still a little bit of a wild card, and, and we do see a lot of interest and.
We may add additional classrooms.
Right, we anticipate, hopefully, more growth, and we'll have to work through that.
Why do they not qualify for funding?
The states.
So I, I, I'm going to clarify that. So the state has indicated that we get ADA for all students who are four years old up through March. Next year, it'll go to April. We have said as a district, we believe all four-year-olds, no matter when they come in, whether that's April, May, June, July, and so we don't receive the ADA, but we, we pay for the program out of our general fund. So that, that's what we're supporting.
But only temporarily.
Right.
And eventually, that will move. So eventually, we will receive ADA for all four-year-olds.
Right. Yeah, it's fully implemented in the 2526 school year, so that birthdate, birthdate has moved each year closer to that, so it will get better for us as we get there.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And then one last question. And then one last question and this was just, wasn't trying to understand. So on the criteria and standards review summary on the report around deficit spending, where it says a criteria wasn't met, can you say a little bit more about that?
Yeah, I don't either, sorry. Can we get back to you on that one, I think, just so we don't make a mistake in what we say to you? I think we're still trying to figure that out.
Yes.
Neither of us have the report in front of us, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you everyone, are we ready to vote then? Okay, we'll start with our student members, trustee Cattoriano.
Aye.
Trustee Nepomassino.
Aye.
Everyone else? Okay, passed unanimously. Thank you both for coming. Okay, we're moving on now to item H2. We will now consider H2, final offers for allocations of facilities to charter schools as facilities license agreement under Prop 39, Education Code, Section 47614, for the 2324 school year. Do we have a motion on H2?
I support.
Dr. White here's pain, second by trustee Cattoriano, I mean, sorry, trustee Nepomassino. And let's do, students, members, trustee Nepomassino.
Just before they vote, one quick question. Were there any discrepancies with the entities themselves? They all accepted? Okay, good.
Okay, trustee Nepomassino.
Aye.
Trustee Cattoria.
Aye.
All others? Okay, that passed unanimously. Okay, let's move on to item H3. H3 is the home-to-school transportation plan as required under Assembly Bill AB 181. Superintendent Jackson and staff, please present the item.
Thank you very much, President Baso. Yes, Assembly Bill 181 and related California Ed Code offers school districts the opportunity to provide neighborhood transportation to low-income families of UTK to sixth graders, our students with disabilities and students in transition, and we receive reimbursement for these services up to 60%. And we are, this is something to brag about. San Diego Unified is certainly already leading this effort and providing home-to-school services. And so I would like to welcome our, our senior director of operations support, Marcelline Schuto. Schuto, recently married, congratulations.
Thank you.
And also our director of transportation, Jean Robinson, who will share the, the details of this plan, and this is new this year, this plan. So I will turn it over and, and again, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, Superintendent Jackson and Board President Baso, Vice President Hazen and trustees. I am Marcelline Schuto, no longer Marquez, Senior Director of Operations Support, and I'm joined by Transportation Director Jean Robinson and our Transportation Manager Daniel Gilbreth, sitting in the front row. And we're here to share a really fantastic opportunity for the district and the families we serve through AB 181, which offers California school districts an opportunity for reimbursement for transportation services provided. And so we will review what this opportunity means for our school district and our proposed plan for increased home-to-school services that we would like to begin this coming school year 2324. We have a pretty brief presentation and then in the end, we will request your approval of our plan. Next slide. And so the most wonderful news is that, again, as Dr. Jackson mentioned, we are leading this work in providing home-to-school services already. And based on this new legislation, we anticipate being eligible for receiving several million dollars in reimbursements through the home-to-school program for services being provided during this current school year, which meet the criteria. And that figure is currently being evaluated by our finance folks, but preliminarily, it's looking to be near or over $10 million, so we're very excited about that. And a bit later in our presentation, we will reveal our plan that proposes to really just build on what we're already doing in our school communities and increasing those existing services to maximize our reimbursements. Next slide. So this graph shows the services that we currently provide to our district pupils. It provides a graphic view of the percentage of services currently provided to various programs in our district, serving about 5,500 riders a day. And our budget is calculated a little differently from other department budgets because we have to calculate by minutes utilized to support various programs. And those minutes turn into the resources of driver hours, the buses, fuel maintenance, and related overhead costs. And we know, when we look at that graph, the first thing you probably notice is the big blue section of the pie, which represents our students with disabilities, about 20% of the pupils that we transport, but representing about 75% of our overall expenses. But on the next slide, we have a breakdown of all of the different programs that we transport for in more detail, and it provides a narrative overview of our programs, programs supporting our children with disabilities, including trace for our young adults, our children in youth transition programs, our homeless and foster kiddos, Veep Magnet, late activity buses, and the athletic and super-popular field trip programs. And it should be noted that only the top three categories that have asterisks next to them are the ones that are required by federal law. All of the other services that we provide are based on what our board has asked us to do because California state law does not require transportation of students. Our integration Veep and Magnet programs were at one time legally required due to a court order that came about, I think, when I was in kindergarten. And, but in 1998, that court order was removed. And because we were so successful with integration, we have continued to provide Veep and Magnet transportation services because it's an important part of who we are as a school community. And so we are excited because we're already going above and beyond and we're already meeting reimbursement requirements because we already do provide some neighborhood shuttle services. And on this page, outside of our legally required and integration, purpose transportation, you see that we also provide neighborhood shuttle services. We get lots of requests for neighborhood services and so we follow a scaffolded priority system to identify which requests we're able to implement. We look at things like safety and crime data, traffic and road conditions, access to programs for some of our families, and support for our military and also just community requests and needs. And these currently provided services are above and beyond what is legally required. And so it really puts us in an enviable position of already meeting AB 181 requirements where some of our LEA neighbors are just sort of, they're asking us, what are you doing? Because they're just starting the process. And so you might notice that all of the communities on this slide are secondary schools. And this is because most of our district elementary schools have very small attendance areas that are fairly walkable. But seven of the 11 communities that we currently run Neighborhood Roots in meet the low-income requirement for this legislation for reimbursement. And so our plan for next year, we are required to develop and prioritize UTK to grade six students in low-income communities and as well as our students with disabilities and kiddos in transition. And so we identified these sites based on the legislative criteria and transportation support that we're already providing in that, in that cluster. And implementing services at these five sites will be cost neutral for us next year because their current bell times are aligned with services that are already being provided in the community. And we have already conducted outreach to those sites and they are part of our stakeholder and educational partners group. And so moving forward, of course, the goal is to include as many communities as we can. So we have identified additional clusters that meet that criteria based on free and reduced lunch data. And because most of our elementary schools are configured as K5s, 6, 8, and 9, 12, our stakeholder and educational partner group, we'll need to look at ways to build in those sixth graders as we grow our plan to expand our already existing neighborhood shuttles. And we will also be looking at attendance rate data as we believe these services will help support improved attendance in some of our communities. The legislation requires the development of a plan, including input from our educational partners and stakeholders, as well as reports on specific data points that are listed for reimbursement purposes. We held our first meeting on March 6 and we're going to continue to meet every other month during the school year and then we will resume meeting in the fall as we plan for next year's plan. We have to get it to you and have it approved by April 1 annually. On this next slide, we recognize that we have many potential topics to discuss with our educational partners. And this is just a dynamic list of potential topics that we could be discussing as we work through our plan. And so sharing of information and related conversations will continue through the end of this school year and again, resume in September. And our transportation educational partners, our staff members and labor groups are very interested in staffing concerns, including recruitment, hiring, and retention of quality employees, especially drivers. And that will really be necessary for us to grow the program. Our educational partners at the school sites are really interested in how student attendance may increase and the potential positive impact of home-to-school transportation on pupil achievement. And so our transportation team and our educational partners really believe that this plan supports our district FOKI on equity, access, and opportunity, and it's supportive of our students and families and our communities. And so our ask at this time is that you approve this plan for home-to-school transportation and we're happy to address any questions you may have.
I have a question.
Before we start with questions, let's do, is there a motion?
I'm approving.
Yes. Dr. White here's pain, second. Anyone? Trustee Barrera. All right, now, go ahead with your question.
I think the last time I was at Horton and the time before it, when I was at Horton with you all, I think I've been there since we were all there, that's the one comment I get all the time, that if they could get a bus when it rains, at least, they could get the students there because the parents cannot walk in the rain, that small road. So, I mean, and they talked about the fact that ADA is impacted. If we can do that, it might replace the cost.
Absolutely, and coincidentally, a group of the principals in the Lincoln Cluster corresponded with us this morning and we reminded them of this plan and how our first step is really, at this time, going to be a cost-neutral step. But if we're able to hire additional drivers over the summer through our recruitment efforts, then our next step would be to look at including some of those other schools because really, it was by virtue of bell times that we were able to identify the five schools that we did because it doesn't require us hiring and scheduling additional drivers.
Yeah, because they wanted to just get together and pool their, their pennies so that they could get a van, whatever. They just want their kids in school.
Totally understandable.
And it's raining and this has been a wet year.
And we get that and we understand that too, but literally, it's an issue about number of drivers. We do not have enough drivers. Our retirement rate is pretty much parallel with our hiring rate right now, so we haven't increased since the pandemic. We've just been kind of maintaining status quo.
I put staffing here because I got out there and tried to drive that bus, remember? The big one, the really big one. That's funny.
Trustee Hazen.
I have a, sort of, I have spared folks my environmental soapbox, but our, we did an inventory, GSG inventory back in 2017, was it? That found that two-thirds of our entire district's GSG admissions are coming from student and staff transportation. So my question about this is, to what extent are we articulating this with fleet electrification? And also Lamont and I, or Superintendent Jackson and I and Chief Contreras, we're in the St. Patrick's Day march on Saturday, was that? It's a long time ago. And we had, we had one of our electric buses and it'd be great if, I, I see some of these, you're pretty heavy on, on students with disabilities, so presumably many of these buses would be smaller, smaller vehicles. Are we, are we electrifying those? What's the status of bus electrification in association with this program?
Yes, our fleet of, right now, we have 13 electric buses. 10 of those are wheelchair buses for these students. And that's, those buses are what makes it possible to grow this program because it fits into the kind of routes that we would run in the neighborhood routes, the capacity of those electric buses. Our biggest, our biggest challenge is recruiting. It takes right now about 90 days to bring a person in, train them, get them certified, licensed, before they can be driving a bus. There are no trained bus drivers on the street right now. And so part of that holdup is, we've accelerated our training, but there comes a point where the CHP has to take over and they have limited resources. So we're getting a little bit of a backlog in that and Dr. Jackson has offered to reach out to his contacts to see if we can actually create a CHP officer that we would fund under our safety and training folks.
Jean, I, I think, can you, can you talk a little bit about how many more buses we plan to get in our fleet that are electric? And, you know, what's the plan over time, if you have that?
We've already applied for an EPA grant that would provide for 20 additional buses. We have a goal of having, of adding 36 additional electric buses over, within the next 10 years. In addition to just not only our electric buses, we've, under the grant that we bought these initial buses, we have electrified everything, all the pieces of equipment that we use in the Lincoln Cluster. So we no longer have any gasoline-powered lawn mowers, custodial equipment. We've purchased for Lincoln's use, a 10-passenger van. We're buying electric trucks, pickup trucks, if Ford can ever get their problems fixed so we can get our order in or get our order back. We also are doing a electric food truck, electric food delivery truck, a community outreach vehicle that our, our school police can use, but also any, any groups in the, in the district can use as, as an outreach into the community. So we're looking for every grant that's out there to get funding. We're partnering with, with STG&E and charging companies that will take care of the infrastructure side, but the challenge is, is finding enough of those, those buses. And, and we're looking to, to eventually be able to fund it ourselves through the carbon credits. We're looking, we have, three of our chargers are V to G capable, so we're looking to create revenue that we can grow this program and maintain it.
And presumably, you're working with Lee Dilgoff on getting as much of this Inflation Reduction Act funding that's coming at us, unclear what it's going to look like, but presumably you have folks staffing that.
Yes, yeah. And our environmental, or, folks that deal with our background are, I'm trying to think of the Chris Palace and those groups on the environmental issues, or the electric, utilities and electricity, the power.
Questions on this side? Trustee Hazen?
Thank you. I'm wondering for, so I know we say above and beyond for the neighborhood shuttle services. Are some of these, I believe some of them are, are they funded by families at the schools?
They are not at this point. We did have a fee for transportation. We suspended that when we went into COVID. We have not started that back up. That's something that we could definitely look at and I think if we could look at how we do that for those groups that are, you know, that are in a better position to afford to pay that and, and would have to pay. It's not subject to any student who's eligible for free reduced lunch. So the way that the state has funded free reduced lunches, you know, whether So the way that the state has funded free reduced lunches, you know, where they don't do applications as much anymore, it's a universal feeding, has kind of put our ability to identify those students, and special ed students are not, are not required. But we would look at, especially as we expand it to charging the families for doing that.
That would be great, as we look ahead to the new budget. And I'm wondering, so, making a connection, so I saw under the last presentation, the financial presentation, that potential shifts could include home-to-school transportation, but then I'm hearing here that this is budget neutral? So do we?
It's only budget neutral for this first year, because we have the drivers that can run the routes. But moving forward, to be able to expand the program, we will need to hire additional drivers.
I see.
Yeah. If you know anyone, please send them our way.
And along those lines, so that's my, my last question is, so that is the only barrier to our ability to expand, is not having sufficient staff, and I-
Currently, yes.
And so, and I'm wondering if we can take a second look. I know we had looked at alternative providers who have drivers available now, and I would encourage us to do so. I know a lot of other districts are doing that, to provide that home-to-school transportation.
Do you want me to do it? I'll do it. We hear you, and we'll work with our partners as well when we're trying to outsource within our district contacts.
Very well.
All right. Any other questions? Other questions? Trustee Barrera.
Yeah, just, so when we talk about San Diego High Cluster in 2024, are we including the Logan Memorial schools in that definition of San Diego High Cluster?
We can, yes.
Yeah, because that's where we have some of the schools with the highest chronic absenteeism, so, yeah, that would be great. Yep.
And we are doing some neighborhood transportation for Logan Memorial from the, when they eliminated one grade level at Sherman, I believe.
Yeah, perfect.
Other question on this side?
I just, I had a question around, like, wraparound activities at school, so as we're developing our programs for, like, after-school sports and other extended learning opportunities, are there opportunities for students to then take the buses home after the sports programs? This is the middle school I'm talking about. Well, I guess high school, too. I mean, do they have late buses? Because that's kind of a, something we need to support.
Those are the late activity buses that we-
Okay, you did mention that. Okay, thank you.
Any school that has Veep or Magnet Transportation, we provide late activity for.
And then the other question I had around was, I was at CPMA, the middle school, and they have students from all over the district, and a lot of low-income students. And one thing they said that they offered to get more families to come to their back-to-school night was a bus at some of the areas, like, close by schools, so the, the families could go to those schools and take, they could all come as a group. So I think it's important, not just for the students, but also our families and those evening activities. So is that being done at other schools, or if they're reaching out?
Yes, those are services that we provide, as long as the schools contact us and make those requests. Evening activities are really easy for us to staff. It's that crunch time in the morning that-
Sure.
-gets pretty difficult.
Yeah, no, that's fantastic, because I love the idea of, they, it really increased the number of parents and community members they were able to have at their back-to-school night by offering those buses. So I remember that, and I thought that was fantastic. Okay? We, oh, one, sorry, Trustee Couturiano?
Yeah, I, again, I just want to first give a thank you for all this great work with the plans. I'm really excited to see where this goes in the future. I was just wondering, I guess, the plan seems clear to me of the rollout, but is there any more specific goals or metrics? Are you looking for a certain rideability number, or is it, are you looking for a certain number of schools to access, or is it just the broad statement of more riders?
Well, we are going to continue to work on the plan and be able to provide those details to you later on in the future. So we don't have all the details yet. We know what we have to report on, and we will be developing the specifics of the plan with our educational partners. This is the beginning of it.
Thank you. President Hazen?
And so is Slide 6, is that the plan? There's no document, there's no, like, I just want to make sure I'm clearly understanding what I'm approving.
Essentially, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Details to be forthcoming.
All right, let's start with our student board members, since we have a motion in a second. Trustee Couturiano?
Aye.
Trustee Nepomassino?
Aye.
Anyone else? Please vote. Okay, the motion, Dr. Pedersen. Oh, there you go. Now you're official. All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, now, we are on to the superintendent's consent agenda. We will now consider items I-1 through I-43. The superintendent's consent agenda, items I-2, I-8, I-9, I-24, I-25, and I-28, I-31, and I-38 were previously withdrawn, oh, by staff, yes. Is there a motion on items I-1 through I-43?
Motion.
Motion by Vice President Hazen, second by Trustee Couturiano. Okay, and do we have any speakers?
Yes, I believe you have one speaker. Heather Russell on I-14.
Okay, we have three minutes.
My name is Heather Russell, and each board meeting, I bring awareness about San Diego Unified and Mr. Jackson's discrimination, harassment, and retaliation toward my son and our family. And now, we are finally getting due process settlement agreement reimbursements. But with that being said, there's a few things I do want to mention. One, San Diego Unified still owes $3,898.97 that you are negligent in reimbursing our family. And number two, I got a call from the state saying that although my son was enrolled at San Diego Unified last year, August to the end of February, receiving distance learning, San Diego Unified specifically removed my son's name to not receive any nutrition or funds for nutrition provided by the state for lunches. San Diego Unified and Mr. Jackson, by not reimbursing funds, it affects my son's academics. By not reimbursing art, music, and dance classes, in your own words from last board meeting, it affects my son's mental health. And by not reimbursing funds from the state for nutrition, it affects my son's health. Your hatred, Mr. Jackson, toward my son is unforgivable. And I'd like to make two propositions. One, let's schedule a meeting to resolve this. We have a settlement. I can come here for every board meeting, every two weeks, but I'm open in resolving this fairly. I will send you an email. I would love to meet with you and resolve this. And number two, my son is here tonight. Meet with him. Tell him, San Diego Unified, tell him, Mr. Jackson, tell him you don't care about him. You don't care about his academics, you don't care about his mental health, and you don't care about his nutrition. Let him know you don't believe he deserves everything every student is receiving, because you would rather keep the funds that can make a difference in his life. And if you do meet him, he's one of the most incredible people you will ever meet. He is wonderful, and strong, and brave, and smart, and funny, and loving. And on your newsletter, this is the last thing I'm going to say, "Our schools make San Diego a better place, every student, every day, for a hashtag #BetterSD," end quote. But that is not true. It is not better for every student. And you can change that for my son.
Thank you. Do any trustees have questions or wish to discuss items I-1 through I-43? All right, we will please vote at this time.
Pardon me. I just want to reiterate, this trip to Yokohama, I know I said it before, but I finally pulled up the award. He got, he got the Schumann Award, High School Music Teacher of the Year, JP Balnot from Mission Bay. I got a rep, Mission Bay. It's an incredible group, they're going all the way to Yokohama, so.
Right on.
That's one of the field trips we're approving, so.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Pedersen. All right, Trustee Nepomassino, would you like to vote?
Aye.
Trustee Couturiano?
Aye.
And everyone else? There we go, motion passes unanimously. All right, we are now on to non-public, non-agenda public testimony. We have received, let's see, I think we have seven in-person and one virtual request on non-agenda testimony, and we, each speaker will get three minutes. Let's start with, well, we have, yeah, let's start with Sandra Appeling. Is Sandra here?
Hello, I'm Sandra Appeling. I'm here today crying out for help that Superintendent Jackson noted at the beginning of this meeting that you'd like to hear from families about. My children attend Grant School. My son Stacey is part of the moderate-to-severe special education program at that school. Stacey is a different person than he was when he entered Grant, for all of the best and most amazing reasons. He is this better person because of the support and services he receives from the special education team, from the general education teachers, and from our school community. Grant has a wonderful special education program. Our community also recognizes that having children of all abilities on our campus benefits every single student on the campus. It's building compassion, understanding, and equity within our school. Ed data shows that children with disabilities at Grant are showing outcomes beyond district averages and significantly higher than other schools in our area. Despite this, the decision has been made to close the moderate-to-severe program at Grant and move our neighborhood kids to a different school with the consolidation of moderate-to-severe special education programs. Why would this program close despite being the success that it is? When you look at the facts surrounding this decision, it shines an undeniable light on discrimination and systemic racism. Almost all of the children in this program at Grant are Black and Brown children. Them being singled out to be removed from their school environment where they are consistently seeing successes showcases that discrimination, systemic racism, and school segregation are alive and happening in San Diego in the year 2023. The systems are built for these marginalized students to face setbacks and hardships in their education, and that is what is occurring here. Superintendent Jackson, in February 2020, you said, "We will be about diversity, we will be about equity, and we will be unapologetic about being inclusive." At the start of this meeting, you re-echoed those sentiments. The parents and community members that I'm here with today, both virtually and in-person, are taking that call to heart. There were just four individuals who were the decision-makers in this change of this program. The justification for their closure is misguided and was made without the input of any of those affected by the change. In fact, it was made without anyone from that group even stepping inside that classroom to see the experience that those special education students were receiving. They are already planning for compensation for academic regression and social regression that these already impacted students will surely face with this closure. They will tell you that bias had no factor in their decision-making, but it's plain to see that it does. With systems built for hardships for these students, for them not to consider those biases and deliberately make a decision to further disadvantage disabled children of color, they have made a decision to continue practices of ableism, discrimination, and systemic racism within our district. We're here today to tell you we do not agree with this decision, and we will continue to advocate and fight for our community until this is properly addressed and corrected. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have, let's see, one, two, three, four, it looks like four people signed up from Kate Sessions Elementary. If you want to all come forward, you'll each have three minutes, but we'll just put you all together. We have Ava Reese first.
Hi, I'm not Ava Reese. She wasn't able to attend.
Oh, I'm sorry, what's your name?
Sana Singer.
Ava Reese. Oh, Sana Singer, I'm sorry. Okay, and then we had Ryan and Peter, or one of them here? Okay, okay. Sounds good, thank you.
Should I go ahead? My name is Sana Singer, and I live in Pacific Beach. My son, Peter, goes to Kate Sessions Elementary and is in the Say after-school program, as is, as my spouse and I both work full-time. A few weeks ago, we received the surprising news that the school had decided to change the after-school provider from Say to another provider. This was a shock, because we love Say. We have only ever heard positive things from other parents about Say, and as far as I know, none of the Say parents were notified that we were changing providers, or that it was even a possibility, or given a chance to provide input before the decision had already been made. The Say program has been our son's constant source of support and his rock throughout the changes brought on by the pandemic. The wonderful people at Say, including Ms. Kate and her staff, have been taking amazing care of our son since kindergarten, and he has been exciting, excitedly waiting for the day his little sister, who's starting kindergarten this fall, could join him there. It absolutely broke my heart to tell him this news. It was especially frustrating to hear this decision was apparently made by an interim principal who'd only been on the campus about five to six weeks. I contacted interim principal Ward and our area superintendent, Dr. Christina Casillas, about the situation, and only received vague answers as to the reasons for the change, such as staffing and the need for more enrichment programs, which, by the way, Say has excellent enrichment programs and activities for the kids. They both indicated the change had been put in place, in place by our prior principal, Tracy Makings, who had also not been at our school very long. Interim principal Ward claimed that all providers were given notice and an opportunity to respond to these so-called issues. According to the Say program, this is not true. They were just as surprised as the rest of us that this change was happening. I urge you to look deeply into who initiated this change and why, because I can assure you, it did not come from the parents. You can never replace the personal connections these kids have with the Say providers. Please don't put these kids through another totally unnecessary change. I hope the school district will reconsider this decision. Thank you. And I'll add that another parent has started a change.org petition that had 11 signatures. I was the 12th that she submitted to the principal. I don't know if she's going to be able to speak tonight, virtually. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have, is it Ryan?
Yes.
Yes. Kohut?
Hi, everybody, Ryan Kohut. You know, I just want to reiterate what my wife had to say, you know, especially with the pandemic, you know, consistency and the depth and stability of relationships have become even more important with these kids. And, you know, a change at this time, I know there are a lot of reasons for change, you know, and, and change can be warranted, you know, the reasons we were given were to maintain or to reduce cost of the program and to, and to provide additional capacity. I know there was a capacity issue at one point when another local provider, G3 Kids, abruptly ended their after-school program. I know that brought a lot of kids to pile into the same program. But as I understand, there hasn't been a waiting list or anything like that for a long time. To the extent capacity has been an issue, it's the same reasons that everybody is having trouble, with your bus drivers, with other service industries, especially given the low wages and, and undercompensation and childcare. You know, staffing is an issue with that provider and any provider you bring on. You know, as far as cost, right now, we pay $526 a month for Say. I do know the new program is coming in at $501. And I know that's, you know, $25, that's significant in a lot of families, but that doesn't seem to be what the real issue is. And so I'd encourage that, you know, this board go into this issue and find out what really is going on, because I don't think we've really heard why this change is being made, so thank you.
Thank you very much. And then we have Peter Kohut.
My, my name is Peter Kohut, and I'm eight years old. I'm in third grade, and I go to Kate Sessions. Also, I go to Say. I have been doing the Say program for three years. Say is one of my favorite places. They let me play group games with other children. That's something I usually never get to do. The Say counselors are really, really nice, and they make me feel special for who I am. They let me play sports I don't really get a chance to do normally. In case my school computer dies, they let me borrow computers for my homework. The Say counselors are Ms. Kate, Ms. Collins, Ms. Shayla, and Ms. Rachel. They let me play with toys I don't have at home, and that's why I want you to keep Say at my school.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Peter. All right, next we have Karen Hoffman? Is Karen Hoffman available? Nope. That's okay. And then after that, we have Diane McCoy. Is Diane here? Oh, if you can just come up to the front, Diane, so you're ready to go. Thank you.
President of the Board, rest of the Board members, and Superintendent Jackson, I'm here as the co-chair of Glisten San Diego, and I really wanted to applaud both the work that you do, as well as the work that your staff, your faculty, is doing in the community to continue an emphasis on equity and diversity, serving the needs of all children. I think that I was impressed by the statements that you made at the beginning of the meeting about your commitment to values, and I was also very interested to hear the report today on A-through-G success, graduation. And I think that the work with values and supporting all children means that the LGBTQIA+ plus community is not going to be bullied, is not going to be absent, is not going to be undergoing the mental health issues, physical issues that oftentimes accompany these children's experience in school when they're not provided with that safe learning environment that we know. You know, all of the studies, the Trevor Project, Glisten's own national study shows is so, so critical. So I just came up tonight to thank you for what you do and look forward to your continued leadership within the County of San Diego, and in fact, the entire state of California. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Next, we have Diane McCoy from Paradise Hills Elementary.
Hi, Board of Supervisors, Superintendent, thank you all for your time. I am coming in representation for many families from Paradise Hills Elementary School. I'm here to address the replacement of Principal Alua at Paradise Hills Elementary School. In fact, a lot of parents can't be here because Mr. Elizondo, area superintendent, was holding a town hall for parents. Many families feel that she's not fit for the leadership role at Paradise Hills. She lacks communication, answering questions, concerns, no action on bullying, no PTA, no volunteering, and our library's been closed all year, and most of all, our children's safety. I myself was volunteering in my daughter's class a few months ago for all of 10 minutes and asked to leave because my paperwork was not finalized. It's still not finalized. But most importantly, the safety of our children and staff was jeopardized. On February 16th, there was an intruder at the school within the preschool held in the auditorium, and just on the other side of the doors, kindergarten and first graders are having lunch. Luckily, nobody was injured, but that's just luck. No announcement was made, no report was filed, zero awareness. The faculty was finally formally informed about this March 2nd. Families were informed by the teachers March 6th, and finally, families were formally informed by Principal Alua and the superintendent, Elizondo, March 9th. We appreciate Mr. Elizondo being present the last week and a half, already addressing so many of our concerns, holding town hall meetings, and addressing safety issues, discussing safety protocols, and staff training that was held yesterday and drills to come next week. We are very optimistic that the change is in the works, but we're hoping, and are hoping our school can have a strong leader bringing back all the fun that can be had with learning, and to know our children and faculty are safe. Thank you for your time. With me, I have 41 family signatures in agreeance to negligence and just not being aware and supporting families, the children, staff, and faculty. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. I think you can share that with our Board Services person. Yeah. Okay, I lied earlier, I said we only had one virtual, I only, I didn't go to the last page, we have, I think, 10. So we are going to see who we have with us here. We're going to start with Gioti Mishra. Is Gioti available?
Hi, yes, hello, this is Dr. Gioti Mishra. I am from UC San Diego, I'm a faculty myself, and I'm also on the leadership board of the UC, and I've been listening to this meeting. Thank you for the pleasure of listening to all the careful agenda items. I'm actually here today representing my children from Kate Sessions Elementary on the same issue that Ms. Sana and her son Peter and Ms. Sana's husband talked about today. We really would like to keep SAY as the after-school provider at Kate Sessions because it creates an empathic, compassionate, and stable learning environment for our children. It has provided safety and security for my own children since they entered kindergarten and now are graduating fifth grade, and my second child is entering kindergarten again. So it's, it would be great to have the same provider carry on, and we do not believe that the other provider can provide any better care than SAY, because we have seen how that other provider has worked through other schools in the same area. As Ms. Sana also pointed out, and that basically, all the, our current principal has not had a good communication with us as to why this provider is changing. We've also had the issue of our principal changing every two months or two, three months over the, over the last year. So we've not had a good official in place to hear parents' concerns about this. Again, requesting that we have an impeccable after-school program at Kate Sessions Elementary, and we, as parents, would really like to keep it that way. As Ms. Sana also said, I started the change.org petition at the school, and 12 parents have already signed it, and if needed, we can get more parents to sign it, but we would like to know who would be the right official to talk to so that we can keep getting the excellent after-care that we get from the SAY program. Thank you so much for listening to this testimony.
Thank you, Gioti. Next, we have Theo Martian, Martin, Martian? Is Theo with us? Oh, there.
Hello, my name's Theo Martin, I'm a senior at Mount Everest Academy, and I'm an intern with San Diego 350's Youth v. Oil Campaign, and I'm here to speak in support of the San Diego, the Board of Trustees drafting and passing a resolution that would commit San Diego Unified to electrifying everything from clean renewable electricity to onsite solar, electric buses and vehicles, and electric buildings. In January of 2021, the SDUSD Board of Trustees passed the Youth v. Oil Resolution, which encouraged California Governor Gavin Newsom to transition away from fossil fuels, but the resolution also included the following demands. Be it for the resolve, the San Diego Unified School District will continue to recognize climate change and climate justice as issues of importance to the San Diego community, and be it for the resolve, the San Diego Unified School District will continue to transition to renewable energy sources with the urgency called for by the climate crisis. By unanimously passing this resolution, this institution committed to prioritizing the health of San Diego students and moving towards sustainable energy sources. Electrifying our school infrastructure promotes a safer environment in the present day, as it's better for students' health, and it also promotes a safer environment in the future as it's working toward a transition away from fossil fuels. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Theo. Okay, it looks like the next three, no, two individuals are not present, so we're going to go down to Jackie Helenbrand. Jackie, are you available?
I think Gray Hack is online.
Oh, I'm sorry, Robert's not available, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gray. Yeah, you, he was, you had his, him as not present, he got changed. Okay, Gray Hack, Gray, are you available?
Yes, hi there.
Sorry about that, go, go ahead.
It's okay. As a parent of an LGBTQ student in San Diego Unified, I wanted to take a moment to thank this board, the superintendent, and all of the departments under them who work tirelessly in support and affirmation of the LGBTQ students you serve. As you may already know, the Trevor Project's 2022 National Survey on LGBTQ Youth Mental Health found that LGBTQ youth who live in a community that is accepting of LGBTQ people reported significantly lower rates of attempting suicide than those who do not. Your public support makes a difference in our kids' lives, and I just want to thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you, Gray. And we are now down to Jackie Helenbrand. Is Jackie available?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi. I'm just jumping in along with the other parents from Sessions Elementary regarding the SAY program. It's only my first year, as my son is a kindergartner. I do have another kindergartner going in next year, and we were excited to have them both at SAY. The staff has been absolutely amazing. We love Ms. Kate. My son is so excited when he gets to go there. The programs are awesome, the staff is responsible. And, you know, I had reached out to Principal Ward, asking for just some information as to the abruptness of the change, and same with the rest of the parents, the answers weren't really there. There's no difference in price, there's no waiting list currently, so there shouldn't be a staffing issue. And we just want to really say that nobody that we've talked to regarding, from the parents, have had any issues with SAY. There's nothing but positive, glowing reviews from their students being there, and coming from all the parents who are, continue to have their kids there. We just ask that something gets looked at so that this program that's, you know, been there for 10-plus years doesn't have to go.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you so much.
We are now up to Alicia Nichols Gonzalez.
Hi, my name's Alicia Nichols Gonzalez. I live here in San Diego, actually in Paradise Hills, and I'm with Mothers Out Front, we're a group of moms here locally who's organizing for climate justice for our kids and the next generation. And my spouse is actually also a teacher here in the school district. So I'm here today to also ask the school board to move towards electrifying our school district, as many school boards throughout the country have been doing. That means 100% clean renewable energy, electricity, onsite solar, electric buses and vehicles, and electric buildings. The benefits are healthier schools, modernizing the school's heating system will also allow us to add new filters that remove viruses and reduce indoor air pollution, and fighting climate change, doing our part to stop burning fossil fuels. It also lowers operating costs, so electric buses, as you know, use less energy to run, the same is true as heat pumps, electric kitchens, and for climate resiliency's sake. So electric equipment backed up by onsite solar and batteries can help keep the school's power on during extreme weather and community emergencies. So I think also in light of SDGNE raising gas rates even faster than electric rates here, we're all feeling it, and I feel like it's a perfect time to start transitioning to electrification in our school district.
Thank you, Alicia.
Thank you so much.
All right, next we have Tanisha Jean Martin. Tanisha, are you available?
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, the board for allowing me to speak, and superintendent, I appreciate your time. My name is Tanisha Jean Martin. I am the Climate Community Director with San Diego Sustainability Coalition, urban, sorry, Urban Sustainability Coalition, and I'm here to also speak to making sure that we are committing to electrifying everything for our schools and districts, 100% clean renewable electricity, the onsite solar, obviously, electric buses and vehicles, and the electric buildings. As a parent, it's really important to me to see the board commit to electrifying everything. It's healthy for our kids, it fights climate change, and saves money over time. I really would like to thank Dr. Peterson for actually bringing to attention the buses. Again, that was something that was on the agenda, want to speak to, and him doing it really already set the tone of knowing that you are actually trying to make the changes, and it's totally appreciated. However, I, what I heard was, you know, 13 electric buses are now, and being applied for a grant for 20 more is the goal, with 36 more in 10 years. I'm not sure how many buses we need to make it 100%, but just knowing that that is hopefully the way that we're going and to encourage it. And again, I can't, I know that you obviously understand the importance of electrifying our buildings and the schools and bringing solar, and I can see it happening around our schools, but I would also like to point out that what should be also included into our curriculum is making sure that the children are knowing how important it is that we're going this route. Why are we going this way? And as well as careers in the field. So like in high schools, I have children right now, I have a 19-year-old who just graduated last year in 2022, and I have a daughter right now who will be going to be a freshman, and a two-year-old who soon will be going to, you know, high school eventually. And the point is that if they don't know the career path right now, it doesn't help them for the future, the way that it seems like our global economy needs to be going. So when we have pathways, for instance, sports medicine, and even maybe pre-med, and a couple others, whether it's engineering, that's great, but I think we really need to make sure that a part of the curriculum also includes different things that have to do with electrifying our communities, and making sure that they're prepared to go into the business in a career field that will also support them. And if we don't start early, like as far as elementary school and middle school, when they get to high school, it may not be something they're interested in, even though it could be something that potentially could be a benefit to their lives, as well as the rest of us who will benefit from them being, choosing a really good career, and the help to sustain and resiliency and a community, and obviously, that needs to have this happening. I thank you again for your time, and I appreciate, and we'll be watching to see how we move further. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanisha. And that concludes our non-agenda public testimony. We would like to thank everyone that stayed and provided comments this evening, and please know that we will be referring the public, non-agenda public testimony items to the superintendent to work with staff for follow-up. We appreciate your input, and please know that your perspectives help us to better serve our students, parents, and the community. This concludes the agendized business of the board. A special joint meeting of the San Diego Unified and San Diego Community College District Boards will be held on March 21st. The next regular meeting will be held on April 11th. This meeting is now adjourned.